Why don't we go ahead and get started? We've got a pretty full agenda and we've got the Planning Commissioners joining us for at least part of the meeting. And I welcome them to stay for the library master plan and also the bus shelter if they choose to, but I know that they have their own meeting this evening too.
Wow.
Okay, so we won't take any offense. All right, so why don't we go ahead and get started. The first session that we have is the Kensington presentation by the developer. And this is really an opportunity for the developer to present the project to the council. And I know that council members have gotten some of the staff comments, but it's really preliminary at this point. But it's an opportunity to hear from the developer directly, but no action as of tonight. Mr. Novak, it's all yours. And if we can try to keep this, given we've got a full agenda, to no more than going past 7:30, and let's leave enough time for questions, et cetera, as well.
Do you need to use this?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ed Novak. I'm president of Nova Habitat. With me tonight is my partner Harley Cook. Harley is with Kensington Senior Living. We also have with us tonight Eka Raharjo, our architect from Mosley Architects, Karen White, our civil engineer with Walter Phillips, and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and James McCandless from Street Sense. Why are we here? Obviously, we're here to discuss a development proposal. But there's really a broader answer to that question. And I'm going to let Harley take over a little bit here and discuss really what assisted living is all about.
Women generally live longer than their husbands, and they take care of their husbands during their declining years. Then they are left alone, typically in the home in which they've raised their children. They're very reluctant to leave that home with all of its memories of the times of the family. As a result of that, they tend to stay in their homes too long and become isolated as their friends pass away, as they don't get out, they don't get the medical care they need, and they don't take care of themselves in terms of eating. As a result of that, they end up being isolated. When they come to the Kensington, they're surrounded by friends, by caregivers and nurses, activities, transportation, and we see a major transformation in the attitude because socialization is really essential to health and well-being. And that's what we're all about.
I think everybody in Falls Church knows where the Burger King is. But just in case, as you know, it's, we're right across the street from, it's at the intersection of North Lee Street and West Broad Street, and it's directly across North Lee Street from the Broadway. This is a shot of the site from Broad Street. This is the intersection of North Lee and Broad. And then this is a shot of the side entrance to the Burger King, which also serves as the drive-through entrance off of North Lee Street. This is directly across from the residential entrance of the Broadway. The site itself, just as a general overview, is about three-quarters of an acre, 34,000 square feet. As you can see, there's the entrance, the main entrance on Broad Street, and then the secondary and drive-through entrance off of North Lee Street. I'd point out that it's an almost square, relatively flat site. The building itself, the Burger King building, is 2,835 square feet. So for anybody doing the math, and I know we'll get to economic development issues in a little bit, but that is a .083 FAR. It's not even a .1 FAR. That's a typical pad site, retail, 100% commercial, but that 100% commercial is only worth $400,000 on land that is assessed at 2.1 million. To give you a quick overview of the project, this is our proposed Kensington and Falls Church project. It's a five-story building. The assisted living is on floors two through five. That consists of 88 units that would serve about 105 to 110 residents with three levels of care. We have street-level retail. We'll get into that in a little bit. The entire building is about 80,000 square feet, so that turns the site from a .08 FAR into about a 2.4 FAR. The parking is underneath the building. The only vehicular access is off of Lee Street. We would be closing the entrance on West Broad Street. And also, just because I know you've had some mixed-use projects come through here, we are 100% concrete construction. This is I-2 occupancy, fully sprinkled, fully fireproofed building. In terms of the architectural highlights and refinements that we've made, and we have made some refinements since the project was initially submitted, high-quality architectural materials. We have a traditional exterior design. There is extensive articulation and facade details, as you'll see. We have employed a pitched roof, as opposed to the flat roofs that are in most of the more contemporary buildings on West Broad Street. It is 100% masonry exterior. That's a combination of brick, hardy plank, which is a cement plank material, and precast stone. And as I said, the parking is underneath the building. One thing in terms of the refinement that we did, in terms of the staff comments, we have increased the amount of brick versus hardy plank. We pretty much followed the recommendations that were given by Jim Snyder. Also, we made another revision by increasing the entire setback of the building to a minimum of 20 feet back from curb. At one point, the western edge of the building was 16 and 1/2 feet back. The eastern edge was further back, but it's now all set back a minimum of 20 feet. This is the Broad Street elevation. 100% brick on Broad Street. You probably can't read it, but just to give you an idea, the height of the building to the top of the roof slab is about 63 feet. To the top of the ridge of the roof at the highest point's about 77. So that would say the midpoint of the roof is about 70 feet. Our original special exception application was just for height, because the height limit in the B1 zone, without a special exception, is 55 feet. This is roughly the same height, and that's an accurate representation of the height of Hilton Garden Inn, which is actually a six-story building next to us with a flat roof. So our roof, the midpoint of our roof is a little bit below the Hilton Garden Inn. The top of the roof is a little bit higher. The Lee Street elevation, again predominantly brick. The interior, there's an interior courtyard there, and you'll see this more when I show a plan, but that is where there's hardy plank material. That forms a courtyard and an outdoor piazza area, which serves as the outdoor social and activity area for the residents. It's up on the second floor, up above street level, so it's fully protected, but it is visible and it has a southeasterly exposure, and we expect that to be a very popular and active place. You can also see on the far right side would be the entrance to the parking, which is underneath the building. All the parking is screened. There is no visible parking from Broad Street or from North Lee Street. It's behind the building facade. The west elevation, the rear of the building, again, the brick wraps around the sides. There's an entire brick base and the hardy plank above. And then this is the north elevation. This would be seen by the guests at Hilton Garden Inn. That also has an interior courtyard. One of the decisions that, whoops, one of the decisions we made as far as initially going to a five-story building as opposed to a four-story building was that would allow greater setback from Hilton Garden Inn. They supported that. They appreciated that, and they're appreciative of the architecture. And again, this shows the floor plan of the site plan, so you can see the courtyard area off of North Lee Street. There is additional setback on the east side of the Broad Street facade. That allows for an outdoor seating area for the café bakery that we will have. And then there is another indentation on the Hilton Garden Inn side. I know that there's been a lot of questions regarding our retail strategy and plan. We have a common goal. It's very important to us that the retail areas on the ground floor announce our building and give it the identity that is consistent with the quality of project that we want to have. This will be including all investment costs, soft costs and everything, over a $20 million investment by us. So it is very important that the ground floor retail is active, successful, vibrant, and consistent with the quality we want to have. In terms of our initial plans, we had a corner café and bakery, as I said, on one side of the retail, and we were going to utilize the other side of the retail for what we refer to as a spa, which would include hair salon, physical therapy, and treatments. That would be open to the public. Our plan was to have that open to the public, but it would also be used by our residents and would be a nice way for them to, you know, interact with the general community. We have made some changes since then, and we subsequently retained Street Sense to further advise us on a retail plan and strategy. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to James McCandless, and he will talk further about that plan.
My name is James McCandless. I'm the director of retail at Street Sense. Before I jump too quickly into this, I just wanted to highlight that while I don't know most of you on the board, Heatheron and I co-wrote something called Vibrant Streets, and it was a whole methodology on creating great vibrant retail. A lot of those theories that we discovered in that analysis and methodology, we applied to the analysis of this site plan. Just for fun, the site that we saw before, which was Burger King, in non-technical terms is often called a fried egg, because it sits there with all that parking around it. And so I'm excited to see what we're going to do here. And what we're talking about is, in terms of the next steps, we've advised that the space be increased from 1,600 square feet to 1,900 square feet. This fits more of the typical café or and/or wine bar concept, or something of that nature. The goal with this corner, I think, is to really activate it, to make it somewhere that people would want to become a destination, and also extend what's already on the block. Again, referring to the Vibrant Streets methodology, what kills great retail is kind of the loose tooth or the missing tooth. And so what we have now going down the street is some vibrant retail, Panera Bread, then there's a Burger King parking lot. And so if you add this in with the Hilton Garden Inn, it starts to extend the streetscape even further in the next block. Also, we've advised to increase the floor height, ceiling height. That would also permit additional ventilation, which is something that the retailer would require. As it relates to the second space, what was discussed as a spa space, it was our idea and discussion with Harley and Ed that perhaps this become more of a community use, something that's civic or cultural in nature, and we discuss something in the line of an art studio and/or gallery combination. The goal here would be to both create a public and usable space, but also to allow for residents in the building opportunities for performance and exhibits, both on the first and second floor. In terms of some of the specifics, this was the original plan. It was 1,600 square feet. We advised to remove the corridor to the back, because that would not be required under the analysis that we did. We thought that loading could occur through the parking. And again, we also enjoyed the fact that there was outdoor seating along Broad Street. Additionally, on the, what is now your right side, we advised to move the electrical and storage unit room into the more left configuration, which you'll see on the next slide. We think this is a much better configuration for both the art gallery and for the retail space.
And as James pointed out, too, as far as the art gallery and retail space, we are working, we've had discussions with Falls Church Arts and Creative Cauldron, and are working towards a potential partnership with them. And this shows, this slide shows the, actually, the first main floor, the second floor of the building, the first main floor of the assisted living. Everything that's in yellow is public, kind of community space for assisted living, including the outdoor piazza and the dining room and the parlor. And this space would be available for art activities such as play rehearsals, things like that. We really view the first floor art gallery as an entree into the entire project, and we hope to have some intergenerational programs and really activate this. We also think it will be complementary to the café and wine bar area. Let me move on to the economic benefits of the project. We are convinced that this is going to be a significant upgrade to the commercial base for the city. This is really a $20 million investment or more, including soft costs. We're going to have 75 employees covering 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That's more than, arguably considerably more than Hilton Garden Inn. Hundreds of family members and friends will be visiting regularly and on holidays. This is room nights for Hilton Garden Inn. And perhaps most importantly, this is really high-quality urban architecture and streetscape that, you know, will complement the other redevelopment that has occurred along Broad We anticipate a significant annual revenue increase directly. We expect $250,000 to $300,000 a year between property taxes, beep hole, meals, and other taxes. That does not include spin-off benefit to local retail, hotel, and restaurants that will occur due to our project. We are aware that there is, there was some concern expressed regarding the fact that the only other assisted living project in the city is Sunrise, and that they have a, you know, an exceptionally low assessment. We're not exactly sure why, and rather than continue to try and figure that out, that's really the city's business, our response has been to submit a proposal to the city manager to fix our property tax rate at $175,000 per year over a 12-year period. That would be, and with a small decrease in the first year while we're filling up, but that would be $2 million a year over 12 years guaranteed to the city. We will continue to pay beep hole taxes, personal property tax, and meals tax as those would be normally assessed. The issue isn't with those, it's really with the property tax assessment. There are several other issues that we're in the process of addressing, both with our own consultants and with city staff. One of them is LEED and Energy Star certification. Energy efficiency and environmental sensitivity is very important to us. We are long-term owners. We do not charge the residents back for utilities, whatever, you know, we have, we're highly motivated to have as energy-efficient of a building as possible and environmentally sensitive as a building as possible. We've gone through an informal scoring with our architect, who has several LEED-certified architects on staff, and the project comfortably makes it into the silver level. The question that, you know, frankly, we're addressing right now is the cost of LEED certification. As you may know, that's an expensive process to go through. We don't have a $70 million or $80 million project, like some of the recent mixed-use projects that have been approved, and we are concerned about the cost of that. And I would point out that that cost is exacerbated a little bit by the fact that in Virginia, some of the easiest LEED points to get, and this is our experience in other areas, is with solar hot water heating. Covers a number of point categories for LEED, and in Virginia, the lack of solar incentives versus Maryland, DC, New Jersey, California, virtually every place else we're developing, means that the consultants that we're talking to in that area simply won't do business in Virginia. They don't have a program for a purchase power agreement in Virginia. Unfortunate, but that's the way it is. Other issues that we're looking at, affordable dwelling units. As some of you may know, I served, you know, with a group of about 15, including Lindy, on the Affordable Housing Policy Task Force from 2011 to 2013. That recommendation, and had it come up at the time, I would have pointed it out, Kensington, our assisted living project, is not traditional housing. And it's a challenge. I mean, affordability is definitely an issue, but the fact is that 75% to 85% of the monthly fees that a resident pays to live in assisted living, and certainly as you move forward to memory care and Alzheimer's care, is for the services. So what assisted living really is, is a private pay alternative to, you know, Medicare-reimbursed long-term care. Many of our residents already utilize their assets and family support for assisted living. Relatively few of them pay 100% of the cost of assisted living out of retirement income. A lot of times, this is the last two, three, four years of their lives, and they are utilizing assets and other sources of support. Our Kensington pricing model includes internal subsidies. When you look at the cost of providing the care, it can be upwards of $3,500 to $4,000 per resident per month for assisted living. The way that we've priced our units, the smallest companion unit is priced at basically $3,500 to $4,000 a month. In other words, they're getting free rent. They're basically, 100% of their fee goes to just paying for the services. That's possible, because in the larger units, our rents can, our monthly fees can sometimes go up to $7,000 or $8,000 a month. So we have an internal program to try and be as broadly affordable as possible. That said, you know, we will continue to work with the city towards a partnership solution in this issue. Another issue is parking and traffic. We just received today our final report that was revised at the request of city staff, and as expected, the parking, or I'm sorry, the traffic will actually be a reduction over the existing Burger King. Traffic is really a non-issue here. None of our residents drive. It's visitors and some employees, the employees are predominantly going to be taking public transportation and carpooling, but it's really visitors that are going to be coming on non-rush hour times. In terms of parking, we had an independent study submitted to the city that indicated the maximum parking requirement of 56 spaces, I'm sorry, 51 spaces, including the assisted living, the café bakery, and the art gallery. We're proposing at least 51 parking spaces underneath the building. As everyone knows, those get shuffled around a little bit. Right now, our plan shows 54, but if a column comes in or something goes out, you know, it may drop down to 52 or 53, but we will meet what the third-party independent consultant has said is the requirement. That said, that will require a waiver from the Planning Commission. Assisted living at the time that the zoning code was developed was not a well-known quantity. As a matter of fact, I don't even think it was applied to Sunrise. Sunrise, to the best of my knowledge, has less than 20 parking spaces. We're going to have, you know, well more than double that. On the conclusion and next steps, I sincerely believe, and I say this in all honesty, that this is really an exceptional project for the city on a three-quarter of an acre site. If I thought it was a higher and better use for the city, something that would serve the community more, something that would be a more in-keeping project with the rest of the West Broad Street redevelopment, I would propose it. I believe this is the best. I believe it brings, you know, it has no impact to our schools. It's synergistic to Hilton and Mad Fox and other city businesses, and it really takes, you know, one more step towards building a great, integrated, gentrified urban village. We are anxious to work with the staff and the boards and commissions to address the remaining issues. We would like, if possible, to request first reading of the project on October 28th or as soon as possible thereafter, so that we can begin that work in earnest with the boards and commissions. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Why don't we see if staff has any comments to add? I know that we received just the staff bullet point, but I want to give Wyatt an opportunity to provide any comments, and then turn it over to the Planning Commission, if we can
We have done preliminary analysis, economic development staff and planning staff, and there's been limited work done by Public Works. There have been some changes made on some of the major issues that were highlighted, the setback issue, some of the design issues that were highlighted at the Architectural Advisory Board, and the Planning Commission have been addressed. And so I think progress has been made. We're really looking, I think, for, from council as to the, is this an appropriate use, using the special exception process? Is this something you want to see here on this small site? There is also additional economic analysis that needs to be done. In terms of timeline, given what is presently on the staff and planning commission's agenda and city councils, this is, this could not happen on the 28th of October. We're working through Harris Teeter. Tonight, we're working on Tinner Hill. So there are a number of projects we're trying to bring to conclusion, and also working on other projects that will be coming forward. So this would have to get in line with those in terms of timing. As also, there are a number of ordinance amendments that city council and planning commission are going to be looking at as well. So there is a capacity and timeframe issue on an aggressive timeframe for this.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Wyatt.
I would just add that we have been working with the developer, and the developer has made changes responsive to comments that we've made, but we think that there's some more dialogue that should happen. One of the purposes of tonight is just to make sure that the council and the planning commission and the community were aware of the information that we had, so everybody was starting from that same basis point as we continue those discussions with the developer. And I think we'd benefit from council and planning commission comments tonight.
All right. Why don't we start with the Planning Commission? Ruth, I can turn it over to you.
Until, I don't want to defer. You go.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said I defer until I want to not defer, until I want to talk.
Okay. Alternatively.
You know, I had more questions than comments. One of the things that I was looking at was the retail space that you have allocated. I was wondering whether that retail space could be increased, because it seems to me as if, if you have, you know, the kind of residence that are going to be the building are not going to be interacting very much with the public. So if you have more than, I mean, let's say an art gallery, for example, and if you had a series of restaurants, I think that would sort of increase the ability of the residents to be able to interact more with the public. I don't see just the art, because art galleries usually become a static sort of interactive space. I would prefer to see other retail activities taking place within, you know, the first floor of the building, so to bring the, to draw the public more into the building. So, you know, that's generally my comment and my question. My question to you is, would you consider looking at other retail activities other than what you have in the building itself right now? than what you have in the building itself right now?
We have looked at a lot, and I guess, James, if you want to jump in here and respond as well, I mean, I developed a Byron, so, you know, we had, we've had our, we've had our share, I'm sorry. You know, we have looked at quite a number of retail options, along with Street Sense. I mean, realistically, it's a three-quarter of an acre site. It's not a two or three acre site. So a series of restaurants, and given the parking constraints, given the site size and the constraints, are limited. We actually, you know, I respectfully suggest that our programming of the art gallery and space is to make that a highly active, highly vibrant space with, I don't know if you've been to Creative Cauldron?
Yes.
And, you know, been to their, their activities, it would be in cooperation with them. And frankly, that, we believe, will make whatever we do in terms of the restaurant space, whether that now includes a wine bar or other activities that could be done, you know, for evening events, be that much more successful. So we absolutely agree with your premise that we want to increase activity, vibrancy, interaction, intergenerational interaction, all admirable objectives. And we've been working with Street Sense to try and identify an actual plan to do that.
Good. Thanks.
I do want to say, I definitely think the architecture is better than what I saw at the AAB meeting, which was, gosh, like five or six weeks ago maybe now? Yeah, it was a while ago. But anyway, I appreciate the changes that you made. I think the addition of the brick, especially on the side facing the Broadway and some in the back, really made a big difference. And I think it's nice the way that you pulled back from the Hill and Garden Inn a little bit, you know, which is, I mean, from a street perspective, it doesn't matter, but I think that was a nice thing to do for them. On the, I guess there's a couple things. I'm assuming now, if we have the art gallery, then the spa, the hair salon, that option is gone on that first floor retail. Is that going to be?
Correct. They go back up into the building.
They go back up in the building. And, you know, I've interacted quite a bit at Sunrise through the years with various scout projects, and where we've done stuff with the residents there. Are you going to have a more interactive population than generally does that Sunrise? Because most of the residents I met are quite nice people, but I can't really imagine any of them really walking out into a cafe kind of environment. They all seem to be at, you know, a fairly high level of assistance needed. So are you guys going to have different levels than Sunrise has at this point?
We see the cafe being outward oriented to the community, and probably attract people in the twenties and thirties and forties. Our residents probably typically would not go to the cafe. But for the art gallery, it's to be programmed for programs in which some of our residents would come down for classes. We often have residents who were professional artists and still are able to draw and paint quite well. And they would come down and participate in the artist association. There would be other times in which they would come down to, for classes on their own, for their own classes, for seniors. So that, there are two ways in which our seniors would act in the gallery, in terms of art classes for them, and then our more professional artists would come down and be a part of the association. In return, the association would have activities bringing the community in, and would be able to use space not only on the first level, but on the first level of assisted living.
Okay. That's why I was wanting to, so really, that, like, that clears it up, so that retail on the first floor is really kind of an outward pulling in people, not really a service for the building as much.
That's correct.
Except for maybe the families or people that are visiting. Okay. And then, I guess the other thing, in terms of the art gallery, I know that when, at the pierce, and the space there was basically what you call, I guess, like a cold box, where it was just concrete with, so are you guys, as part of this proffer, will you actually build out that space? Or is that going to be a space that they're going to have to find the costs, find the money in the community to build out?
No, we would build it out. They would, we would provide HVAC, the walls and so forth. They obviously would do better in terms of the way in which they decorate it. And they would pay their own utilities, but their, their own ongoing, excuse me, ongoing costs would only be the utilities and the maintenance of their space.
And how about the property taxes?
We would pay that.
Okay. I just want to make it clear in my head what this proffer is. I don't have any more questions right now. Ruth? Okay.
Do you mind if I go first?
I got it.
I'd like to follow up with something with Melissa's line of questioning. She asked you about the ability of the residents, and I don't know if you really answered that. Are you going to have three different levels of care there, or is it all assisted living? Or is it, will there be any independent, will there be some Alzheimer's units? How is that going to work?
Yeah, we do have three levels of care, starting with what typically is assisted living. Those individuals reign. Some of those are active and are able to go out into the community, others are not. And then we have two levels of memory care. One would be early stages of memory care, where we're attempting to save a person's memory as much as possible, delay the onset of Alzheimer's, and then advance memory care. Those are three separate communities that keep the individual communities down to a smaller community, rather than being institutional in appearance.
Okay. So then, as far as the art gallery is concerned, how much space is that going to be allotted? The larger retail section looked as though that was going to be the cafe, and then the art gallery was going to be?
Eleven hundred square feet. And again, we have spaces above which they can use.
Use in what way? For classes?
Well, we've, we've started the discussions with Creative Cauldron, and also with Falls Church Art, and they've mentioned a number of things. For example, when they need to do rehearsals for plays, we would have space above in which our residents could watch those rehearsals and would enjoy those. Art classes, especially with children coming up and painting on the outside on the piazza or inside in our restaurant, there are many kinds of activities. As you know, Falls Church Art does a lot more than just hanging pictures on the wall. I think they do dance, they do classes, art history, and other kinds of classes. Those are the kinds of things that we would like to do.
And it sounds as though you're definitely committed to that. You wouldn't, you won't consider anything else?
Well, if...
As far as real retail?
We would consider something else for that space. We were looking for something that really brought people into the building, created life on the street. As I can envision, you know, the opening of a show, people coming there in the evening and going across to the cafe for a glass of wine or coffee, and then watching and viewing the show, even, and having conversations in the lobby.
Well, it's just that my feeling is that that's not consistent activity. That just happens once every once in a while. And I'm just wondering if you're looking for more action there on the street, then you might want to keep other things in mind.
We would, we'd be glad to discuss that.
And Rob has said, no.
Can I go back and exercise my option?
Yes, Lindy.
Okay. I really do appreciate all the changes that you made since we met with the Architectural Advisor Committee and a few of us on planning commission. And I think the building looks ever so much better and everything. I really like it. I see it really as a semiotic relationship right there. It's going to bring, you've got the hotel right next door, and you've got all the restaurants. This is why I'm not concerned about a restaurant there, because this would help bring in people to eat at the other restaurants. And so I really, I think, and I love the idea for the art space, because I think that also will bring in, you know, be more interactive with outside people and with the people living there. I really do like it. So that's my option.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just have a quick...
Oh, sorry.
...follow-up. I think that this concern expressed about the retail space that you offer, and I would like to follow up to say, to let you know that the concern is real, and that it would be good to go back and take a look at what types of interactive spaces are available that you could offer within these spaces. And I'd like to see Street Sense, you know, take a look at, looking at those spaces that would draw people into the building, because I think that, that would be, that would go a long way to, to enliven this project. So that's my final comment.
So just in terms of retail academically, developers usually try to maximize the ground floor with the maximum amount of rent and the maximum retail that they can do. I was actually pleased to work with Ed and Harley, and they are viewing retail in the more 2013 model, which is that it's amenity to the community and to the neighborhood around. And they did not come in and say, we want to maximize the rent potential of this space, even though it's not that much space. Relative to the GLA that they're constructing here, it's a relatively small amount of space. However, we preach at Street Sense that creating that amenity on the ground floor today, in today's model, mixed use is not just horizontally co-tenants, it's vertically. And aware of that, and being aware of how do you do that, and how does it interact with the community, is something that we're really driving forward at our company and helping with that, and that's, Ed and Harley were certainly open to those ideas. So I was pleased to see that they said, it's more important for us to integrate into the community than it is to do, get the maximum value. They could certainly come back and try to maximize value, but I think we've seen that mixed use and the future of mixed use is not maximizing at that location, but how does it impact the greater community? And it's a different kind of calculation. And again, that's an academic discussion, but I think these guys embraced the conversation that we had in our office with this new plan.
All right. Why don't we turn to the council members? Why don't we start with Phil?
Thank you. In answer to the manager's question, this counselor would certainly support the request for the first reading on this project on October twenty-eighth or as soon as possible thereafter. I'm fortunate enough to come from an intergenerational family, I suppose, the way you describe it. Our children are now in their twenties, my wife and I are in our fifties, and all four of our parents are going strong, and they're in their mid to late eighties. So we talk a lot about intergenerational communication, relationships, and responsibility. That leads me to be supportive of the concept that you're advancing here, because I think here in the city, we need to do more for folks who are in that upper age bracket that you're going to serve with this facility. Just one final point, I think all the counselors received Barb Cram's letter late this afternoon. Barb, of course, everyone knows, is active in Falls Church Arts, writing in support of the Kensington community retail space for the arts in Falls Church. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. Thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to talk to Ed before about this, but I have been thinking about it. And I must say, the people who've spoken so far are considerably ahead of me in their level of question. I haven't seen the staff report. I haven't seen any of the numbers verified as to what actually will be the city's estimate of the benefits, financial benefits, the sales tax. I mean, I assume that sales tax or meals tax won't apply to the residents after getting served in the, it would only be for the sixteen-hundred square feet or whatever. So I'd like to see what the numbers are. And again, the fact that the end use is very appealing, and that some people come from intergenerational families, is great. But in the end of the day, you have to make a profit, so you're doing what you need to do in your line of work to make a profit. It's still a business transaction, so I would like to see the other end of the business side. I don't know what other proffers, as they're undergrounding, you know. There's other issues I'd like to see first before, before we go too far into the specific uses of this space and how many parking. We don't have that data, so I'm going to withhold my views. But again, to repeat, there's, your presentation is very good, you're very effective, but it's a presentation about the value of the end use. And I want to know all the other components of it, because there are a lot of possible end uses. So we get that data, be in better conditions to make a decision. Thank you.
John?
Unlike Mr. Duncan, I don't feel a sense of urgency here. I think this needs a great deal more thought. This has been presented over the last several months as assisted living, and now it's a senior center. Is it, is it senior, or is it assisted living? Because there is a very different dynamic. I have intimate experience with both. My parents are considerably older than Mr. Duncan's parents, and so I have been through this process. There's a difference. I mean, I just, I just, I don't know what we're talking about here. In assisted living, there is a variety of ages and conditions and lengths of stay as opposed to senior living. So I simply want to know what it is we're talking about, because it has not been clear up until this point. You spoke about assisted living. Your document said senior. I'd just like to know what it is. I was, I was interested in your informal scoring of LEED. I recall at the time of the TJ expansion, there was a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar and someone can check me on this, a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar difference between getting LEED Silver certification for a five-million-dollar expansion, and they couldn't do it. And I'm sitting here thinking, we're talking about, what was the number you said? Ten, twenty million dollar building? On one of our more important thoroughfares in a very visible place. We have set, we have set the standard for LEED Silver, and I don't understand why this is, this is difficult for you to achieve. You've talked about your, the bricks in the building. LEED Silver is our standard, at the very least, and in a significant area. I certainly would not back down from the, from the certification. I just find this discussion disingenuous. We're talking about art galleries, spas, wine bars, you know, I'm waiting for somebody to say Tiffany's. I'm waiting, you know, I don't know what we're talking about on the, on the ground floor. It's, it's just incoherent, and it's confusing. And regrettably, my colleagues on the planning commission, who I respect enormously, seem to have zeroed in on an art gallery. I'd like to know just what this thing is that we're talking about. And until I really understand what this structure is, I certainly can't, can't support it.
Ed?
I don't want to hear comments.
Ed, or, sorry, Ron? Ed?
Sure. Let me get this here. Thank you very much. First off, Mr. Novak, I think we all appreciate your contributions to the city, particularly in the, in the realm of housing, and thank you for that. I do have a number of concerns as well. One, I'd like to understand more, as I think Ira had mentioned, the fiscal impact, particularly as relates to some of the companion properties. On either side, we have a hotel, and we have the Spectrum. If we can for our next meeting, I'd like staff to give us some numbers maybe of what the revenue is either existing or expected from those two properties, maybe on a per-acre basis, just so we have some comparison to what is expected here versus what is existing there. I, I do also have concerns about the retail. I mean, it's actually fairly limited. The, it's just not much. It's really not much retail, and that's because we have a surface parking behind, or on the same level. I understand that. I understand your business model, how things work, and how expensive underground parking is. But I think the retail is very limited. This is a high-profile location. It's pretty much dead center of our business district. You know, Route Seven particularly is the commerce street for our city, and you're pretty much in the very middle of it. And so I do have concerns that the retail is not that deep or that much. And so, I do have concerns that the retail is not that deep or that much. Art gallery as well, I have to say, doesn't get me very excited. Um, I think that we need something there, a restaurant. I hope the space, at least the restaurant space is vanted. I don't know whether it is. I didn't hear anything about that, but it ought to be. But I'd like to see the other space as well for something, it, you know, the upstairs is really going to have a, a limited impact, particularly if you have people with Alzheimer's and other things where they're not going to be probably interacting. Their relatives may come on weekends or in evenings and the like, but you're going to have fairly limited, I think, um, interaction with the neighborhood. And I think the ground floor's really got to work. It's got to home. And I think an art gallery, spa, I guess, is gone, but an art gallery to me doesn't really do that. And so, I would like to see restaurants on the whole ground floor. And in agreement to the extent you're able, that you will actually have a restaurant there, not that you'll aspire to one, but actually have restaurants on the ground floor. If you could, I'd also like to see that, um, utility room, which takes up part of your retail frontage on seven shifted back or somehow have your retail go the full length of your building and not have a utility room, um, on Broad Street, which it looks like you have, I don't know how many feet, it's kind of hard to tell, maybe ten, fifteen feet of utility room on your main street. Um, the, uh, I like the outdoor seating in the front. You're planning for that? That's fantastic. So many spaces, they have the twenty feet and then you can't cram any outdoor seating in, so I applaud you for that. I think the building looks, uh, ten times better than the last time I saw it. I applaud you for that as well. I would ask to the extent you're able to remove the hardy plank, it may be technically masonry, but I, I would like to, to really see as much real brick as you can. I think the front looks great. If we can wrap that around the rest, I think that would be very, uh, an improvement for me. Trying to think of what other comments I have. I have some concerns as well. The twelve years, um, is good, but the life of the building is probably fifty or so years, I'm guessing. And so we got a gap of, um, thirty-eight years where, you know, this kind of runs out. The sun sets at twelve years. So, I have some concerns about that as well. Um, let's see what else I have. That's probably it for now. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, do you?
Thanks a lot. I wanted to listen to others' comments, um, so that, so that I could really, um, understand where other folks are. I, I think first of all, there have been a lot of improvements in the project. And I think there's a lot here worth continuing to work on. I'm impressed that under the proposal, you would about double the net annual, um, return from the property. And it does respond to the objective we need for the future, which is the diversity of housing, uh, types for different populations. Uh, and the arts, which I think are going to be fundamental to this community's, um, future as well as other, um, important, elements of the community, which we'll hear more about later, uh, tonight. And I'm impressed that Barb Cram, who's one of the foremost volunteers in our community, believes that there's a lot of merit in this. Uh, I would like to refine the numbers, uh, somewhat. I would like to get at the LEED certification to see if we couldn't get it up to, uh, the basic standard that we've set. But I think this is worth working on and I appreciate the progress that's been made so far. And there are elements here that I think are going to be very important for us in the future. It's not perfect perhaps, but, um, it certainly represents, uh, a better use of that site than we have now. And again, I think does serve a number of community objectives. With regard to timing, I have to say that when the staff says that it's impossible to do this and maintain work on the Harris Teeter and Tanner Hill projects, um, reserve at Tanner Hill. I think I have to follow them on that, but I want to see us continue to make progress on this project. I don't know what the right date is at this point, but I think there's a lot here worth, uh, worth working on. Uh, we've made some progress so far and it's an improvement over the current site in terms of its revenue generation to a significant degree. So, I hope we can move forward on this. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'll make a couple just, um, comments and then some questions, I think, that are going to be for staff and the developer. First and foremost, um, right now, we're talking about an SE application. One of the requirements, I believe, Mr. Shields, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's, that it needs to be an exemplary project. So, um, you know, similar to what Ms. Barry said earlier, um, I'm trying to see that. I think you made a very good presentation, but some of the, some of it seems a little disjointed. We're talking about arts, but yet we have an arts district, um, and we're trying to create an arts corridor. Then we're trying to get some synergy around, um, and then we're looking at some art space here. And I'm trying to get a sense of how it all fits in together, other than trying to propose things to make this particular project work just because of attractive aspects of it. And I'm certainly a supporter of the arts, um, supportive of, of the grants that we put into place, as, as other council members were in creating that district and trying to get that in, in, in our, in our commercial corridors as part of the cohesive, but trying to do it as one-offs because it garners community's support somehow, um, without any rhyme or reason or seems a little disjointed. I'm, I'm not sure is the way, um, way to go. So I'm, I'm trying to look for that exemplariness of this project and I'll talk about some of the economics in a minute. But, but that's, that's what I'm weighing this project on. Certainly whether it fits part of our housing need is part of that, but this is an SE application and it needs to stand on the SE application. So I'll be weighing it. And I think we, at some point, we do need to get staff's views of how it fits the requirements. But that's how I'll be analyzing it, is how does it fit within the code requirements, not just on what housing is needed. On the point of what housing is needed, which again goes to, um, what I wasn't quite hearing clearly is, certainly I think based on our previous discussions on housing needs, I think the city has a need for spectrum housing all the way from, um, seniors that may need very minimal assistance to no assistance. They can transition through housing types within a building. We're seeing that in our community with a lot of our residents moving out to other spectrum housing facilities and buying into that model and then aging within those buildings, um, in a, in a very positive way. And we're seeing folks leave our community for those types of projects. I'm not getting a sense that this model is that, but I'm sort of hearing the buzzwords for that, but I'm not quite seeing how it fits into that. And if it's not, then we need to have a discussion about it. But when I see a project labeled as senior housing and then I hear assisted living, it's just not connecting with me. So I need to get a better sense of that. And I think that's where Ms. Barry's comments were going, but, but she can certainly speak for, for herself on that point. Two, on the issue of affordable housing and affordability, I think I sort of heard what you were saying, that this isn't really a housing. It's a service provider, but again, I hope that if this project does move forward, there's a place for our residents and affordability. When I hear some of the numbers that you were floating at, that takes out a large segment, I think, of our population, even at the large income levels that we have in Falls Church. Certainly what I'm hearing from our seniors and our, et cetera, they're feeling they're, they're getting pushed out based on our tax rates. And when we're talking about the monthly rents that would go into this project, I don't see our residents moving in demographically. Not seeing it. Um, so that, that's, um, an aspect of this as well for me. Timing, capacity issues, we already, Vice Mayor Snyder touched upon that. I won't, uh, repeat those. The retail spaces, again, again, not, not seeing it given how they're laid out and the narrowness of those sites and exactly what the plan is for the retail use. And on the pilot, I have to say, when I first, this project was sort of floated, the pilot numbers that were being talked about were much higher. Mr. Shields, am I correct in my recollection that at one point, we were talking about three hundred and fifty K? Was sort of the number that was floated by, by the developer?
The, um, not in terms of a, of a actual pilot.
Sorry, not a pilot, but what the projections were by the developer on straight analysis.
I don't recall, uh, ex, I know the numbers have changed and we've had a lot of back and forth in terms of what the assessed value would be and what the construction cost basis, uh, would be. And, uh, I, I could look back to Rick for memory on.
Do you remember what the number was?
Or Ed?
I do. Since I, since I floated it, I do.
Well, our analysis, what I can say is that what our analysis shows is a, um, an income value of a property of this nature based on, uh, direct comps that we've researched that would be considerably lower than the construction, um, value. Construction value probably ranging between fifteen and eighteen million, um, based on different, uh, uh, sets of information. But our valuation shows it, uh, in the range of eight or nine million, based on an income approach. So that's probably the difference in, uh, perceptions on, on value.
But, but am I correct in my understanding of what right now is being discussed as a pilot of, um, one seventy-five plus whatever other?
That's correct. That's what's on the table right now.
And right now, the site's generating about?
About a hundred and twelve.
About a hu, a hundred and, a hundred and two or so?
Yeah, that's right.
So the delta is roughly s, seventy, let's just say, seventy-two, seventy-three?
Well, the, um, no, it'd be higher than that. He says just the property tax.
Property. What are we anticipating for others?
About sixty thousand.
Other sixty?
We projected, at the hundred and seventy-five, that's only property taxes.
Okay.
Bee pole tax would be, um, between thirty-five and forty thousand. Um, the, um, personal property tax would be, um, between twenty-five and thirty thousand. And, um, you know, with their expanded, you know, with, with wine bar concept, cafe, bakery, um, at nineteen hundred square feet, it's not inconceivable that that would do a million dollars a year, five hundred dollars a square foot in business. So, you know, if that was the case, that would be another fifty thousand dollars in sales and meals tax. So that gets to the two hundred and seventy-five.
Okay. So that's how you're getting to that number?
Correct.
Okay. That, that makes a little bit more sense. So if we can, you know, at the right time, start seeing that economic analysis, but that, that's, it's making a little bit more sense of how, how we're coming to that now. And then finally, what I'll, what I'll go back to and what I was saying earlier about the exemplary nature that there's got to be something that makes this work to make it exemplary and that's what I'm trying to get to. And if it's, whether it's a wine bar concept, et cetera, it's got to be intricately woven into this project. So I'll, I'll put my cards on the table. If it's, let's build it and let's hope a wine bar shows up or hope a concept of retail shows up, it's not where I'm going to be. If that's the exemplary concept of it, it's got to be locked in. We've done that in the past with other sort of mixed usage, uh, projects where it's been an office building that's tied to residential, et cetera. But if it's, let's build it and see what happens and hopefully, uh, the retailers will, will come in, is, is not, is not where I'm going to be at, no matter what that concept is. So, those are, those are my two cents. All right. Mr. Galen?
Just building on something that Dave Tarter mentioned, uh, the, uh, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's fixed. So, it, that means that by the time you get to year twelve, that could be worth, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred thousand and so forth. Was there a reason you picked twelve years? Is, that happens to be the duration of a twenty-year bond? Is there any relationship, uh?
There really wasn't. You know, I mean, we wanted to look far enough out. I mean, again, you know, we're looking at this, I mean, our competitor's going to be Sunrise. Sunrise is paying, you know, this is, we, we proposed something that is roughly three times what Sunrise is paying today. If Sunrise, who I understand is appealing their taxes right now, if they get their appeal, um, granted, then we'd be paying close to four times what Sunrise is paying now. So, we picked, you know, we agreed to, you know, we proposed a number that we felt fairly assessed what construction and land costs approximated, knowing that, again, you mentioned, and which is true, that over time, there's inflation, over time, there's also depreciation of physical assets. So we kind of picked a, a midpoint and projected it out. It's certainly something we can discuss further with the city, but it is based on, uh, you know, a rough estimate of what we thought the assessment of the city should be. Now, the assessment of the city, frank, frankly, on the only one other assisted living project in the city, is dramatically less than that.
In any event, uh, I'd like to see the hard numbers. And, uh, since comps were mentioned, I'd like to see some comps outside of the city as well. The other, you know, projects that you've done, uh, just to get an idea where we fit in compared to, uh, not just, uh, one, one other project is not a comp. So I mean, just to get a better idea of, uh, what comparables would look like. So I would like to see that in the staff report, when you can, when you can get around to that. Thank you.
And one other point that I'm sorry that I missed, if I can just have one last parting shot, is, um, on, and this was sort of alluded to, I believe, on the retail space, but also, um, just from a planning perspective. I think we had talked about when we're looking at these SEs, even though they're falling, some of these are going to fall outside of our area planning process, of getting a sense of other usage based on the site and the limitations, et cetera. So, in, in due time, I'd be interested in hearing from planning staff on, on, given the, the limitations, what's going there, what would, what would there be, their view of, um, the best use of that site? The greatest best use is what I'm getting at. And again, I understand the timing and I share the timing and, you know, I'm with, with Dave on, on the timing of this and where staff is.
Could I just ask one? Uh, could you tell us how long you have control of this property? Is this a property that we can, um, be discussing at leisure or?
Well, you know, we've had it under contract since January. And at the time, I did not anticipate that we'd still be waiting for our first reading at this stage. The, I, I mean, it's, you know, the, the Burger King property owner, um, does have pressure on him to renovate the property to current Burger King standards. Our contract goes through April, um, and if, if we are not able to perform and we don't have the approvals, then he will proceed with renovating the Burger King. And that will subject it to another twenty-year franchise agreement. So, that's the reality.
Ron?
One of the things I wanted to point out, I know a bunch of people made comments about assisted living and not seeing a need for it. Has anybody here been through the process of trying to find assisted living for a relative?
Yeah.
And, and the people who buy this and the people who sign up aren't, aren't the people who are going in there. It's, it's the kids and the relatives who are paying for it and need it in a convenient location that's accessible. And I can tell you, there, there is not a oversupply of places like this in the area. I, I don't know how many people come to me in my, when I wear my HR hat, saying, "We need some help finding a place and we can't find any place close in that we like to go to." It has to be a place they're comfortable with because you do pay a premium for this sort of thing. And so, you know, it, I, I, I think we need to step back and take a broader look at that. When you look at alternatives for a site like this, well, you know, you can get an office building, that's dead at night. Not going to support anything. We can, we can have a franchise, you know, a fast food sitting there for a while. We're certainly not going to get a new hotel next door. So, you know, I don't want to just throw something out to say, "Let's, let's not look at something because it's different." This, this concept of putting first for retail and having something that's vibrant at night in addition to people coming and visiting during the day is a little bit unique. And I certainly would like to explore it and not just, uh, dismiss it for all those reasons. The other side of it is about the arts. I know people kind of turn their noses up and say they don't get excited. But anybody read that article about millennials moving into DC that was in the paper this weekend? And a big part of it is arts and entertainment and the availability of these things in a very conspicuous place that people can walk from to get a sense. I mean, if you go up, uh, Fourteenth Street or Fifteenth Street and look, you know, the Signature Theater was out there all by itself until the restaurants and things caught up with it, but it became a destination. So there, there's certainly room for things like that. And I'd hate to toss that aside just saying, "What's the absolute top dollar we can squeeze out of something like this immediately?" Instead of taking a long-term view of what it might lead to in the area.
Yeah, and Ron, I don't, unfortunately, I think that's, that's not what I said and, and.
Well, I'm not saying what anybody said.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to engage in this for the rest of the night? Or is this supposed to kind of be the conclusion of a process? I mean, I, I didn't give detailed comments because I didn't think we were going into it at this level. I, I tried, and if you guys are going to talk, you know, further and further and drill down further and further, then let's keep talking about it. But I'm just trying to understand, where are we at this stage? The question that the manager asked us was, "Is it ready to go to first reading?" My answer is yes. If others don't feel it is, then just say no and we can go on.
I, I think that's a fine point. I mean, are, are there other council members who want to have this scheduled ahead of other items right now? And we've heard from staff that it would push back other items.
I think we need more data, so I'm not pretty.
So, if, if anybody's feeling that, other than Mr. Duncan, that this should be advanced and ahead of others, I'm happy to entertain that. Okay?
Nope.
So I think that's the answer. But, but I, to that point, I don't think anybody's saying that we shouldn't continue to look at this project, so.
I, I, I would like to see us move forward.
And I think that's, that's what we're hearing. It's, the question is timing, given, given everything else that's on the calendar and upcoming for. for council and staff members. So I don't think anybody's saying, you know, let's not end this discussion, but I think that there's future questions and review that needs to happen. All right. So why don't we move to the next item, which is, we're gonna make a slight change. From what I understand, the planning commission would like to stick around for the bus shelter discussion, so why don't we move that? I apologize. Ruth, change of mind?
This is final approval, or final recommendation for us, and we went upstairs, and we've had the presentation several times, so we moved upstairs.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, the planning commissioners and the applicant as well.
So the library master plan will be next on the agenda, and once we've...
So I just got booted from the work session, is that right?
No, no, you're on after library.
Yep, he's gotta run the planning commission.
I'm clerking upstairs. We'll figure it out.
So are we gonna, can you release him, so he can come back for the bus master plan?
Yeah, yeah. We've got a point.
Yeah, someone wanna run up?
Get it started, and then I'll come up in about an hour or so. Deborah G. is down at the historic commission training.
All right. This, the next item is the bus farm story at the library.
It's the rush filter. That's my arrow. Do you wanna follow my arrows?
All right. We're talking about the library master plan and the draft report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. First, I'd like to recognize the library board members who are here tonight. Brad Gernand, who is the chair, Chet DeLong, who is sitting in the back there, and his vice chair, Nancy Bentrup, Jeff Peterson, and Ed Rose. In addition, I'd also like to introduce David Moore, who is the architect, and also Pam Gillan, who was the architect involved in this study. As you know, you have a copy of the final, the draft report, and the board accepted that final draft master plan development and space study at their October sixteenth meeting. It addresses the needs in terms of programs and services, as well as space for the library for the next twenty years. It proposes two options that could address the needs for additional library space, using the existing lot deeded to the city by the Stiles family. It provides approximate costs for those two expansion concepts. It also makes recommendations in terms of services, programs, and staffing for the next twenty years. What are the next steps? The board presents this as a draft master plan, rather than an adopted final report. It asks the council for any input that you might have in regard to the report, and then we will make, the board will make the report public and post it on the website of the city and the library, and ask for comments from the public. And we want to get those suggestions to the board as soon as possible, so we have set up an email address for people to make comments. If there is time, the board also will have some public meetings to solicit comments as well. And then we will try and have everything wrapped up in time for the CIP budget work that's coming up very shortly. And the board has also prepared news releases for all of the local media, as well as the local blogs seeking input as well, and will also be contacting civic organizations, such as the League of Women Voters, the Historical Commission, the boards and commissions from the city, also school board and that kind of thing. The board will consider comments from the public, and then finally ask you to, they'll come back with that plan, adopt it, and then ask you to adopt it as a planning document, and move forward, so that we can continue with the CIP process and the budget, and consideration for annual budget compilation as well. Tonight, I'd like to turn it over to David Moore and Pam, to tell you a little bit about what the options are, and just address it briefly, and then open it to questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's good to be back. I wanted to start by first, again, thanking you, the city, for allowing us the great privilege of working with you and the library, and really helping to be part of planning such an important piece of the community as a move of the future. Now, I'll tell you, today, flew in very early this morning, and had the pleasure of a beautiful walk from the East Falls Church Metro Station to the library, and went through down Columbia Avenue, or up Columbia Avenue, I should say, and really walked through some, just a beautiful neighborhood, and really, I felt I got the spirit of Falls Church, the city, and really understand why this is such an exceptional place to live. And I think it really helps bring some understanding to how important the library is in this community. It is a special place, and it is really a privilege. So with that, again, Pamela Gillan, to my left, is an architect who has a practice here in your city, and has been invaluable in helping to put this report together. And so, thank you for that, Pamela. Another member of our team was here last time, Dick Waters. He is a library consultant, and his work is included in the report, and we can answer any questions, hopefully related to that. So let me real quick give you an overview of the report. Tab one gives you an executive summary. I won't go over that, because you guys can read that, but I will point out on page twelve, we included some writing and some documentation of some existing studies that have been done recently, in the last year or so, around the country, that begins to identify and enumerate the economic, positive economic impact and benefits that developing libraries brings to communities. You'll find throughout the country, from the Midwest through the Southeast, that libraries bring anywhere, studies have shown, anywhere from two and a half to six and a half dollars on a return on investment. So for every dollar that the city, you choose to put into the library, documentation from university studies show that that brings return on investment. So I point that out to you. That was not in the earlier presentation we made to you. Tabs two, three, and four, I won't go through that, but that is essentially documentation of some of the community meetings, the meetings we had with each of you, who we were able to meet with, as well as conversations with board members, city departments, and so forth and so on. So I encourage you to read that. It's really minutes by way of historical record for that. I do want to point out and talk a little bit about tab five specifically, the existing library. Tab five is where we assess, it begins on page thirty-nine, where we assess some of the existing facilities. You have a wonderful library. It is highly used. I don't know if you realize this, but you have an eighteen thousand five hundred square-foot facility. Probably twelve thousand of that is for public space, and it's open seven days a week, as you may know. And every year, they see over a quarter of a million visitors. So it's an enormously highly-used, enormously worn building, I will tell you. And I will say that really, while the library staff has done a tremendous job in putting the library's best foot forward, I think when you take a closer look at the building, you'll see that it is really in need of some serious immediate attention. And I wanna point out some of those things to you. On page forty through forty-three, you'll see an itemized list of many of the library deficiencies, as they relate to safety issues, as they relate to library functional issues, and as they relate to really just deficiencies in the way libraries today, modern libraries, should work, function, the kinds of spaces they should have, but they don't. The library is, well, it's undersized, let's say that. It is too small for its current needs. And I'll point out a few things to you. The meeting room that is designed to hold meetings like this, it's designed to hold summer reading programs, which are highly popular, is less than a third of the size of this room, as you know. I mean, it's very small, very inadequate, and really not commensurate with libraries across this state, and frankly, throughout the Southeast and along the East Coast. Meeting rooms, this library, we said, should be, have a meeting room about eighty to a hundred people. I think you can get about twenty in that room. So it's very inadequate. The children's collections, the children's books are on adult height shelving, poses a security risk, as children's try to grab books from those upper shelves. And those books, children's shelving, children's books shouldn't be on anything higher than forty-two-inch shelving, and it's on shelving upwards of five feet in some locations, and higher on the walls. There's no young adult space in the library, commensurate with what libraries are providing today for teens and tweens. So we call for that in the program. There's no group study space for collaborative learning, group study, team projects after school, where students wanna get together and work on projects. There's no space where they can do that. The staff spaces are highly inadequate. You do not have, the library does not have separate male and female toilets. They all share one toilet. Very inadequate for library standards in Virginia and today. And in several places, you have three or four staff people in rooms the size of one office, a hundred and twenty square feet or less, and they have four staff people working full-time in those rooms. So it's highly inadequate. The positive is that the community loves your library, and they love the location. They conveyed overwhelming support to keep the library where it is. We talked about that the last time I met. They love its centrality to the city. They love the emphasis that the city that you have made and placed on making this a walkable city, and they felt like this location emphasized that. And they also liked the fact that it was in the midst of the hub of a lot of other activities, that they could find a parking place when they find one, and they can actually go to several different venues and amenities within the city at one stop. So that's a positive. It is too small. The building is old. The shell of the building is over sixty years old. It lacks a lot of the energy efficiency. Envelope designs, the windows are not designed to modern standards. And what that means practically is it means that your envelope does not meet current energy codes, which means it costs more to operate, more to heat and cool. And really, the most recent renovations are over twenty years old. And so a lot of the same issues there. A few more things I wanna point out, and this is all in tab five. It's not equipped for modern library technology, has inadequate power and data for computers, does not have a lot of the current spaces, what we call maker spaces, which are some of the trends that you'll see in library spaces. In fact, the last board meeting I attended, you had an Eagle Scout who wants to provide three-D printers, and some of that technology in the library, and the library, I presume, is gonna accept that, but really is gonna struggle with where to put those kind of things. And modern libraries across the country have these for the public to use, and yours does not. The library does not meet current ADA standards, and many of the standards that it is inadequate in are related to the egress path. So you have safety concerns there. And we enumerate a lot of those ADA deficiencies in appendix L at the back of the report. So I won't go through those now. And finally, I'll tell you that the library lacks adequate security measures. For instance, there's no emergency lighting in the monumental stair. And there's several security-related issues that we've enumerated in those pages forty through forty-three, so I won't go through those now. But, so, it's a highly-used library. It's a highly-loved library, and it looks great when you drive by, but when you put it under the magnifying glass for three or four months, as we have, I can tell you there are a lot of deficiencies, and really, it's substandard in regard, in relation to public libraries throughout the state of Georgia and elsewhere. Georgia. I'm in Virginia. Sorry. Virginia. Okay. All right. Don't know where I'm at today. No. All right. I'm gonna keep going. Tab six. This is the portion that Dick Waters and his associates put together, and it has to do with recommendations really directed to the library staff and board, dealing with a lot of the issues related to the management and operation of libraries. So I won't go through a lot of those with you now, but certainly would invite you to read that and ask questions, if that interests you. Tab seven is the tab on the building program. That's page eighty-five, sorry. Page eighty-five. And the program, essentially, in a nutshell, we believe that to meet the needs for the library over the next twenty years, the library needs to grow from your current eighteen thousand five hundred square feet to thirty-three thousand square feet. So that would be an additional fourteen thousand five hundred square feet over what you have now. All right, moving on. Tab eight. This is, let's see, let me move to tab eight. I'd like to turn to page ninety-two. Tab eight, we listed three approaches. I think we talked a little bit about this, so I won't unpack it in a great detail today, but we listed three approaches for expanding the library. How can the city of Falls Church go about acquiring that additional fourteen thousand five hundred square feet that you should have, so that you can have an adequate library? And one of those methods would be what we call raise and rebuild. I mean, it would be to take the building down and rebuild in that same location. The second option we explored is the idea of horizontal expansion, growing the building horizontally, growing sideways through an addition. And then the third one was to look at vertical expansion, which, as you remember, was specifically asked for in the RFP. The structural engineer that we brought on did an assessment of the viability of doing a vertical expansion. I think we mentioned this before, and deemed that that was not practical, highly cost-effective. And the reality is, if you were to add a third floor, excuse me, you would only be adding nine thousand square feet, and you need fourteen. So even if it was practical, even if it was affordable, it wouldn't give you the square foot that you need. So we ruled out vertical expansion, which meant ripping the roof off, adding a floor, putting a roof back on. So what we've done then, on page ninety-eight, is we explored options related to the other two expansion options. So ninety-eight provides a conceptual design for the approach for raising and rebuilding the library. And this really was born out of the question, how can we maximize parking on the existing site? Parking was one of the strongest, loudest, most recurring deficiencies we heard from the public in the public meetings. It was where do we park? Surveys told us that the majority, and the preferred means of getting to the library while it's a walkable city, is still the automobile. And so, right now, you have seven spaces, and we said, if we could maximize parking on the site, page ninety-eight shows how you could, with a reconfigured floor plan and column spacing, get thirty-four spaces on the property. So we said, starting with that as a basis, what would the library look like to go above parking? And so you turn the page to page one hundred, and page one hundred and two, you can see that the library could actually be designed over two floors, which would maintain operational efficiency, because it minimizes the amount of staff that you need to have to oversee the operation of the library. So you could put the library on two floors, get your thirty-three thousand square feet, if you wanted to. And then you could, in this scenario, have the option of going up another floor, which would be page one oh four, and you could actually provide shelf space. And by that, we mean you could actually build a floor above the library, or two floors above the library, and still be within the massing and height and scale of some of the surrounding buildings. It could still be traditional. It could be colonial in the design and feel of your current library, but you could actually provide, each floor would give you up to about fourteen thousand square feet of usable space that you could use for either future library expansion, or you could use for city departments that might not fit on this site, maybe. Don't really know your program in that regard. It could even be used as leasable tenant space, which we think could even provide a possible revenue stream and help finance the project. So we think if this option is something that you would wanna pursue, I think there are actually some advantages to this site. One, it gives you maximized parking, which everyone wants. It gives you potentially thirty-four spaces. It also gives you future growth space for the library. So with this investment, you would not have a landlocked library. So if this library needed to grow again in twenty, thirty, fifty years, you would actually have floors you could grow. So you're not putting money into a site that becomes landlocked. So there are some advantages, and we spell those out, and certainly glad to answer questions on that. The next scheme was, excuse me, starts on page one oh six, and it is a scheme, conceptual plan, that explored the idea of horizontal expansion. And in this scheme, what we looked at was taking, actually, sort of a hybrid, this scheme would demolish the two... scheme would demolish the two recent additions to the library, where we have a lot of inefficiency in the way the toilets are laid out, when you begin looking at the inadequacy of the elevator core and its relation to ADA requirements, when we look at the kind of work we'd have to do to toilets to make them ADA, when you begin to look at the amount of work we'd have to do within those additions, this scheme says, if we were to take those additions off, keep the original library intact, do an addition to the side of it, you would lose the seven angled spaces, but you could go back with a three-story addition. So page one oh six shows you what that main level would be. And I'll point out that in both of these schemes, the conceptual designs reorient the entrance off of Park Avenue, which we think is more of a civic public path of circulation than North Virginia Avenue. And so then page one oh eight would show what the lower level could look like, and then page one ten would show you what the third floor could look like, and that would be primarily meeting room and administration. So this would be essentially a horizontal expansion, but we still would need to add a third floor to that horizontal expansion to get the required fourteen-thousand five hundred square feet that the program would require. All right, that was a mouthful. Any questions on those, before I move into parking and cost? Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question on the various options. Are all those within the current footprint?
Yes, yes.
Including the horizontal?
Yes, they're all within the existing property lines.
So no, no land acquisition?
No land acquisition would be needed for either of these schemes. And that was one of the things we were trying to work to. We were trying to work toward, what can you do with what you have? And we found that you could, first, we started with, what do you need? And we said, you need the square footage. Then we said, can we get the square footage on your site?
Was that limited in the RFP in any way, or is that sort of what was worked towards? Okay, so, so you all were free to look at land acquisition, et cetera?
Well, the RFP, I think, if I, if I remember correctly, actually, there was an addendum that came out and said that we were to look at just this site. We were not, the original RFP has talked about exploring the current site as well as other sites.
Let me, let me ask it a little bit differently then. Did the, did the board look at other options, like expansion, or were you all looking at that current site?
We looked at the current site.
Could I, if I could just ask a quick question? The horizontal expansion, does that provide parking outside, or is that a plan that shows the neighboring property either having structured or shared parking?
This horizontal expansion shows to get the required fourteen-thousand five hundred additional square feet, we would have to grow into that existing angled parking. And, and we've dealt with parking as the next section in the book, but we have not shown any scheme that would assume someone else's property to accomplish that.
But I think to your question, you, you would need, if you're going to lose parking, and you've got a bigger footprint, you would need to get parking somehow, which means
Yes, you would.
It sort of implied or implicit is that you're going to get parking from a neighboring property.
Somewhere.
So that's
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, that's what I
I was missing something there.
Sorry, and I'm sorry I wasn't catching that, you know, because, you know, as I showed you, I thought I was in Georgia a minute ago, so.
Your honor.
Yeah, yeah.
And the reality is, even if we kept the seven angled spaces, you'd still need parking somewhere.
Absolutely, that's my understanding.
You're right, thank you. Any other questions? Sorry, I wasn't catching it. Okay. Well then, we'll keep going. Page one twelve, we talked about parking. So after we met with you at the last time we presented, we did show you some schemes, and really, we were throwing out ideas and brainstorming on ways that, that maybe we could, their structured parking could take place in the city, and then we learned that there were other schemes being designed, or at least thought of. But again, we pulled back to the scope of the RFP, and we went out and we, we did an assessment of the number of spaces within a five-hundred-foot radius of the existing library, and counted approximately seventy parallel parking spaces. The other thing we did is we looked at the zoning ordinance for what libraries, parking for libraries would require, and we also looked at the zoning ordinances of neighboring jurisdictions. And so with, with that information in mind, and based on the parking ratios in those zoning ordinances, we essentially have come back and recommend that the library should have a range, minimum dedicated spaces of one hundred and six to one hundred and three parking spaces. It was a little bit less than what we recommended last time, but we went, again, did detailed count of what you have on adjacent properties. And again, if you did the first scheme, the first conceptual design, thirty-four of those could be on your site. Any questions on parking?
Excuse me, I just ate a little stick of chocolate.
Just spit it out.
The chocolate or my question?
Or at the same time.
At least it's not gum.
So, question, right now, we have seven onsite parking, is that right? Seven spaces? So you're suggesting going from seven to a hundred, and what was the number again?
A hundred and six to a hundred and twenty-three.
So we're talking about, what is that, twenty times, or whatever, maybe, maybe fifteen times as many parking spaces? Do you feel that we need really that many?
I think the public told us they needed more than seven.
I got you.
Right, so we had to say, on what basis do we form the recommendation? And so what we did is, we said, well, what do, what is the typical library standard called for in, in parking to library square footage? And it calls for that amount. Now, libraries in urban areas, in downtown areas, oftentimes can find sort of shared parking, you know, businesses aren't open on Sundays, they need parking on Sundays. So, and some of that happens now. But, but in terms of what you would need to adequately service a meeting room of a hundred people while the library is full with a summer reading program, it could be a hundred and six, a hundred and twenty-three spaces. Not to say that those spaces could be shared with city hall parking or some other parking structure if the city were to do one, but that's, that's typically, if you asked, how many spaces does a library of thirty-three thousand square foot need, that's the number.
But is that, if I could just follow, is that modeled, that ratio on, for example, like Fairfax County, which has, you know, nobody can walk to a library in Fairfax County hardly, versus something more urban, because we have a two-point-two square mile city where there's a whole bunch of people within striking distance of this place, either by bike or cart. Seems like that's just an awful lot of parking spaces.
We actually, in doing some of the parking analysis, I actually, we looked at District of Columbia, we looked at Silver Springs, we looked at Arlington, we looked at walkable communities similar to Falls Church, and did not go out to Fairfax or Miss George Us. And they had a higher, in their zoning codes, they were allowing five hundred square feet per parking space. In other words, they were reducing the number versus the Falls Church being at four hundred. And I think that was accommodating the fact that there is a crease in biking and walking to these inner ring communities.
Hi, just to, for comparison's sake, if the current library at its current square footage were adequately parked, how many spaces would it need? So I get, I get what the net is between the two.
Well, it would be the eighteen-thousand five hundred square feet divided by the four hundred square feet per space, so, you know, about half would be.
Okay, so really, we're, we're already
It's already inadequate, right? And that's what we heard from your community.
Apparently, I'm just saying, so we're talking in terms of over what we currently have, it would be an additional six, seventy, sixty or seventy spaces, because we're already absorbing the extra parking somewhere.
Well, I guess, to me, the question is, are we, how much are we really absorbing elsewhere? Because, you know, I mean, how much are we underparked? I know if you look at ratios, it's X number, but I don't know what the reality is. To me, it seems like the reality of providing a hundred and twenty parking spaces for a library, to me, seems excessive. I mean, maybe that's, that's borne out with statistics, I don't know, but that's why, that was the purpose of the question.
My point was, maybe it's only seventy, because already people find it, I don't know.
I don't either, but that was the point of the question.
Right.
Thank you. Other questions?
First of all, I want to thank the library board and, and the consultants, especially appreciate the library board's approach here, which is to gather the facts and engage in a dialogue with us and with the community. I think that's very, very important, so I very much appreciate that. I'm, I'm interested in the, the horizontal expansion options, perhaps looking at more of them than you have so far. Let's assume, for example, we were able to add parking on an adjoining site, or parking elsewhere, some joint city hall, library parking capability of some kind. And I'm interested in what a mixture of the existing traditional architecture and new architecture might look like, and how you would do that. So, I think this is very, very good. I think it's the, this is important data, I think it's the beginning of a conversation. And I think there's a lot here. I haven't had a chance to review it as much as I'd really like, but there's a lot here. I, I think a couple of things. I'm, I'm struck by the fact that in the private sector, libraries have pretty much been eliminated in favor of purely online research. On the other hand, we have an interesting situation with people living in smaller, particularly younger people, living in smaller and smaller housing units, and needing, in essence, a more common, a common space to meet in, and to, and libraries can certainly perform that, that function. And, and the need for books in the future will continue, and for the existing, for new technologies, and for what I hope will be an expanded archive for the city, because I don't want to lose our history, and I think we're in danger of doing that. So, I think this is a good beginning. Could we have an opportunity to provide some additional reaction after the session tonight, and work with you to look at things? And I'm particularly interested in the possibility of partnerships with some of the adjoining properties in one way or another, either for building purposes or parking or both. I don't think that should be rolled out at this point. And so, those are just a couple of initial reactions I have. But this is a critical facility, it's, it's a wonderful facility, it's needs, I, I think I'm to the point where I'm agreeing that the needs will go up in the future, and I appreciate that you're presenting this to us, and this is a good beginning of a dialogue. Thank you.
And I think as far as process, Mary, what you were mentioning is the board is going to be looking at this again, and then it's going to go community
That's correct.
And then, you know, any refinements. So I, so I think it's, it's really part of a dial, ongoing dialogue before this gels. So I think this is, the purpose of this is more informational, and any preliminary feedback that we have, and I think council members should view it as preliminary at this point, and more opportunities to come both in a more formal setting like this, and then, or generally, as this goes out to
I don't think the presentation is finished yet, though.
No, I don't think so either.
Right, let me, I want to, I want to point out a couple more pages to you, if you'll turn to page or tab nine. The statement of probable cost, which would be on page one seventeen, go to page one eighteen, actually. We took those two conceptual plans, the raise and rebuild, and we took the horizontal expansion. And on page one eighteen, you'll see some conceptual cost estimating for those two schemes. And let's start at the bottom, which everyone does when you look at a budget, we always go to the bottom line. But you'll look at the bottom, and you'll see the heading Proposed Plan B. This is the horizontal expansion, this is the hybrid. And so this is to partially raise those two new additions, and renovate the existing library, and do the addition. And in that scheme, Proposed Plan Horizontal Expansion, you can see that that is an estimate of sixteen-point-two million dollars. Now, to compare apples to apples, you would need to compare that to the very top one. That would be Proposed Plan A. That would be to raise and rebuild just two floors of the library, not parking, not shelf space. But if you just tore down the building, rebuilt a new two-story building that was efficient and, and, and addressed all the inadequacies, that would be seventeen-point-six million dollars. So you can see, it's very similar in cost. By the time you renovate, gut, and, and sort of surgically go in and do all the work you would need to do to the existing one, bring it up to seismic codes, bring it up to all the codes, you almost build a brand-new building for the same amount of money. Then what we did under, if you go down one heading, Proposed Plan A1, Parking at the Ground Level, this says what it would cost if you added parking to the number above, it would go from seventeen-point-six to eighteen-point-nine. And then if you were to add a level of shelf space, it would go up to twenty-three. And then, of course, you could add more floors of shelf space. So not knowing what other needs the city might have, or if there are other departments that would make sense to be in the library, like an IT department or something like that, that could be a pretty cost-effective way to address some other needs, and maybe relieve pressure on other city facilities as part of this project as well. So I wanted to point those two. And then, last page, sorry, one twenty, turn the page. This would be a couple of schedules on how this might lay out. Timeline number two shows, at the bottom, the current CIP allocations for the library, and then the line right above it, under Timeline Two, shows recommended alterations to that CIP that would accommodate the worst-case funding scenario. Certainly, you could fund less and not do parking, or not do shelf space, or you could do just the horizontal expansion. But if you were to do the whole kit and caboodle, take the biggest number, we plug those numbers in, so you could see how that might happen. And then the schedule to execute the work is in Timeline Number One above.
All right, why don't we see if there's any comments and preliminary reactions, et cetera?
Does anyone want to go around?
Why don't we start on this end this time, Mr. Carter?
Okay, question or two. So your estimate of cost for the parking looked like it was about a hundred thou, or a ten thousand or so a space, is that right, ballparky for that? Looks like you've got one-point-one-five million?
For thirty-four spaces.
Oh, that's thirty-four spaces, gotcha. So do you include an estimate for the hundred and ten spaces? Is that included here at all?
No.
Okay, do you have an estimate for that?
The estimate we gave, we, I received for, it was for quasi-parking, in other words, we're taking advantage of the hill
Right.
And building into it, as the lower level is already built into it, and that was averaging about twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per space. The question is, are we building underground, are we building above ground, are we building, you know, how are we building the structure? So there's, you can go up to forty thousand for underground, as you all know, or maybe twenty thousand if it's just a straight
Is it parking with retail on the ground level? So there's just so many scenarios, it's hard to just say, here's what it would cost, until we have some sort of concept design for it.
And so that doesn't include acquisition cost either for the land, correct?
For the, not for the off-site parking.
Pretty much all these are going to require off-site parking, right? Because a hun, you can't accommodate a hundred and ten, or whatever number of parking spaces on the footprint of the current existing building. So I think we need to add, you know, it sounds like between two and four million dollars just for construction costs, and probably, you know, I don't know how many million or whatever it is for the land, right? Because we're going to have to do those things.
Potentially, again, it becomes outside the scope of, of the library study, although it is related. But again, not knowing what other needs or developments, or how other needs can be combined in that one deal, it's just sort of hard to know. But yeah, there would be some number for parking, for sure.
Sure, so I mean, I think when our consideration, when I at least put in a number, maybe it's going to be four million dollars more for off-site parking, for example, based on what we've just described, or what you think the needs might be. I think it would also be good to know from maybe Richard of how much it would cost annually for this kind of expenditure. In other words, a twenty-two million dollar library and parking would cost the city, bonded over twenty years, would be blah, 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 per year. I'd be interested to know what that number might be, not tonight, if you're not, if you're not available to provide that, but just at some later point. Yeah, but some at later point, I think that would be helpful for us to know what the annual cost is. I mean, the library's a great asset, it's a real central core part of the city, so I think it's critical that we, you know, this is an important thing for our community, but I think it's just the start of getting our arms around it. But I thank all of you all for all the hard work you've done. Thank you. Ron?
That was, that kind of covered my issue about the fact that we want to be realistic about it, you got to include what it's going to take to acquire that off-site or whatever else you're going to do with it. We certainly shouldn't shy away from examining a big solution, but we need to look at a total of what it's going to take.
Okay.
I'll pass for it now.
Okay, just a couple of quick thoughts. Again, thanks to the library board and, and staff for getting us this far on it. Obviously, a very comprehensive, well-thought-out report that went into, one, getting the report moving, and then to the report itself. The one concept that I, that I hope that we can get a little bit more deep into is the notion of raising with potential expansion in the future, and possibly interim uses office, whether it's city services, or, you know, private partnerships that would help offset the cost. Seeing if that's viability, doing a little bit of market testing, working with the Economic Development Committee to see if those concepts are out there, if that's a viable concept or not. Certainly, I think, you know, city use of that space and office is one option. And I know that various And I know that various, at one, one point, various departments of city government had leased space, and I believe the library right now is leasing their space. So, bringing, I'm, I'm sorry, not the library, the school board leasing out their space. So, there may be opportunities of putting that in. Would there be cost savings that would help offset some of this? I think if we can do a little bit more economic work on that, it might be, might be helpful.
I'll also point out that in that concept design for that shelf space, we actually tried to develop some internal circulation. So, if you delve into those plans sometime when you have insomnia and you want to look at how the elevators work and the stairs work, it's designed.
So, you could just take it over.
So, that those upper floors would work independently of the library.
I think, I think that's, that's brilliant.
Brilliant.
To be able to, for, at least some time, offset some of the building costs. And then, if the library needs to expand, it can just renovate that floor. And I, I think that's, you know, conceptually, it's a brilliant concept. I think economically, if we can take a look at it, whether it's city, school board, space or private partnerships, I think that's a, it's, I don't know if innovative is the right word, but, but I, I think it's very interesting and it allows us room to grow. And one general comment that I'll make, and Vice Mayor Snyder touched upon this, and this is really, while I think there's a lot more online research, et cetera, that's happening, libraries are still extremely important to the community as, as learning centers and learning centers that are different in the sense that, you know, it's, might be online learning, et cetera, that's going on, but they're definitely communal spaces. And I think that's borne out with the statistics we're seeing, how libraries are being used. So, the plans, I hope, and again, I haven't dove into them, really, I hope that they capture that concept. It's not so much of just places where you go out to check out books, et cetera, but it's where you come and gather. It's sort of like a community center of learning.
It is.
Maybe that's the way of.
It is. In fact, i- in the fourteen thousand five hundred added square feet, in the appendix, there are detailed space program of the kinds of spaces that would comprise that. And in fact, in some of the twenty-year projections, a lot, some of the collections are getting smaller, so we're accommodating for that. But also, it's those group-based collaborative learning, community meeting spaces that, that in fact are making that increase needed.
Right. And I know that the children's programs have been exceedingly successful and when I'm in the library, it's just, Mary's done a great job, along with the board, trying to utilize that space. But there's a huge need for those programs and the space, you know, everybody's doing the best they can with the space, but there's clearly a need there, so.
Thank you. It's Mary. Well, I certainly would, would add all laudatory comments that you've heard earlier to the library board and staff and, and consultants for the extraordinary work that they've done and will continue to do, particularly your efforts to engage the community and, and continue to bring them along in the process. I had actually three questions. The, you had mentioned safety issues and some immediate safety issues, and, and this brought to mind some of the conversations we've had around some of the immediate work needed to be done at City Hall. And I'm, I'm aware now that not only do we have eighty-eight compliance issues, both here at City Hall and at the library, but I'm wondering, given the events over the last couple of years, I'm guessing that there is a different dynamic now with public buildings and how they have to consider safety. It's not simply lights on stairs, but given recent events that all public buildings now need to have a very different look at, at the fact that they are public gathering places. And so, I, I am feeling a sense of urgency about that, certainly with City Hall. But is, is that the case in, in the library? Do libraries now have to think about that burden?
They do. In fact, one of the trends that we see in libraries is that the security issues related libraries today are different than they used to be. And, and the primary security issues of libraries, say, a decade or more ago, was how to protect the twenty-dollar item.
Sure.
From being stolen. And today, it's less, it's less about, you know, taking care of that twenty-dollar item, it's more about how to protect the people. And I've actually been asked to go in and master plan libraries and show them how they can provide second ways out if something horrific were to come in the front door. And a lot of libraries need a place for people to be able to run and hide and get out. And so, we're having to deal with those. We're having to deal with a lot of the post-nine eleven kind of issues with bollards and, and, and the ability to not drive a car into the front door. So, I mean, some of those kinds of things are, are all taken into account when we design new libraries for sure. But I think even in this kind of, whether it's a horizontal expansion or whether it's a ten, or tear down or rebuild, we do all of those. Children's areas in particular, we're, we're often trying to design them. You know, the buildings, you have to, by code, have emergency egress stairs. But libraries really only want one way in, one way out. So, how do you provide extra ways to get out with only having one way in and one way out? So, a lot of times, we're alarming those doors, we're, we're triggering cameras so that when someone goes into an exit stair, the camera turns on, you take their picture. Because a lot of times, it's more about, let's try to, instead of worrying about the CD being stolen, we're worried about children being taken.
Right.
So, there's a lot of issues. So, you're exactly right.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm keenly aware of this, living in the Commonwealth of Virginia, where not only does every, you know, adult get to have a library card, but also gets to carry an automatic weapon and use them both remarkably in the same, in the same institution. So, I, you know, and so I am concerned about that and, and, and thank you for paying attention to that and, and obviously moving quickly on that. The other is, in, in this library plan, I presume we're, we're working towards LEED certification, LEED Silver. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm just going to say, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, you know.
Yeah, right.
And, and it's really almost, it's almost a default. I mean, you know, it's, you don't, we as architects.
There you go. Almost a default. Let the minutes reflect. Just FYI on that one.
You know, well, I mean.
We do, we do have a.
It used to be a novelty to do LEED. And now, it's almost standard of practice.
Yes, it certainly is.
And within the next few years, there'll be an international green construction code and it'll be required by code to do it, so.
Yeah, just, you know.
And to reinforce, it would be done consistent with council's adopted.
Yeah. I thought it was required under our policy.
It is. And last but not least, the staging. Do you, do you address that in this, in this document?
We do not.
Okay. Because that's obviously going to be the next thing on everybody's mind, is how do you make this happen and keep the library open?
Right. So, I say we didn't. We didn't spell it out, but I know some of the cost estimate numbers that, that Pamela put together, and, and those numbers, if, when you read that section, are based upon conversations we've had with local contracting companies. And they do take into consideration some of the shifting and moving and in the horizontal expansion, some of the temporary barriers that would have to take place if the library were to stay operational in one half while they built the other half. So, some of that's accounted for in the cost estimate numbers.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you. Echoing what others have, very nice job. My position on, on the library, I think, has already been well, well presented, and I continue to provide the support. Jumping directly to the points that I, that you raised again, Dave, and I think you mentioned them on, I, I would like to suggest that even before we have final plans, that we, we start to talk to the neighbors and, and right now, find out if it's possible to do a type of public-private, even if the city invested its own money for a parking structure, right? But not to wait until, you know, it's, you know, because I think it will be easy to understand. Thirty-four parking spaces, I don't, doesn't seem to do a lot plus, there's no way to make sure that they're going to the library. If there's a shortage, the parking people park wherever they can. They park in our HOA and we have to discourage them. They park wherever they can. Talk to the medical office and Vantage Fitness in terms of parking issues. They practically have drawn blood on, on that issue. So, I'm not sure thirty-four parking spaces per se is really, I would move to the, to the bigger solution straight away. Can we build a parking structure there that would handle a hundred and thirty or two hundred, whatever may be required? And, I mean, Broaddale is screaming for additional parking. So, the, the whole area there and, and the other side, or Vantage and the REED building and so on and so forth, really needs a parking structure there. And if you can tie the two together, frankly, it'll make a lot easier explanation to the community about some of the benefits. And, and if you want to draw people in from other areas to spend a little bit more time and, as I said before, go to the many yogurt places we have and Falls Church, having a place to park for a couple hours probably would be an essential. So, I'd like to, later, I don't know how we could do, but to suggest that, that we somehow start to talk with the neighbors about the possibility of building structure parking in the, in the spite, space next to the library.
I think that, that raises a good process question. So, I think the, has the library board, obviously, they've talked about this. What sort of, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of, of, of the library board looking at this, given the, the unique nature of the, the board and how they're composed in their charter. So, I just kind of want to make sure that they have enough time to do what they need to do, but yet it's fresh enough to, to get to Mr. Kalin's point. And I'm not exactly sure where the library board is right now with, with their reviews.
You mean in terms of engaging the building next door?
Yes.
In our last presentation to you, we actually asked your permission to engage with the building owners. We didn't feel we actually walked away from here with permission, and so we didn't reach out to them. They reached out to us in very short order because shortly after our presentation to you, the news press came out with its story. So, that building operates as a office condominium. The condo president attended our, our library board meeting, the very next one, and expressed her dissatisfaction at what she feared may be planning underway that did not engage them. And so, we spent quite a bit of time speaking with her and trying to explain to her sort of the wherefores and whatnots of how we've gotten this far. And we invited her to the next meeting. We haven't seen her, I think.
She came last Wednesday.
She came, yeah, that's true. So, we are, we know her now, which is good. We didn't know her before. So, we're actually not quite clear on who would engage the building owners. Would it be us? Would it be city staff?
Or both.
Or both.
And just so the council's aware, the, at that time, there were discussions about meeting with the HOA and we left it at that time with the HOA to set that time. But we can follow up with them and suggest that we do get together.
And this is the building that's on the same side of the street, so.
Yeah.
On Park.
On, on, it fronts Park. And the, and the outreach would be in the, from the perspective of planning, hearing initially what their thoughts would be about a public-private partnership and, and engage with them so we can both learn from each other and then, you know, come back to see if there's any ability to, to pursue something. You can?
I, let me go before I say that personally, I would recommend, I don't know if other members agree, that we understand that the city would be willing to put some money into this. This would not be expected to be picked up by, I don't know what the shape of the public-private partnership is, but this is so central and so important parking area that I think the, in itself, would be, if you could combine it with the library, I think it's a terrific win-win. Before I get off my horse, I'd also like to suggest, as Ms. Mary did, I think the library board really needs to step up and get out there and get its message across, even if you don't have a final plan, because the conversations are taking place. And if, if the library board doesn't get its two-sentence decisions will be made and it'll be too late to influence the way you go, okay? So, I can only recommend as strong as possible that you take a proactive stance and move out quickly to at least explain what you're thinking about and getting the input that you would like to have.
So, just, just going back to the issue of parking, I just want to make sure that nobody walks away thinking that it's not clear. And I, and I can't recall if I was here at the last meeting or not. I, I might have missed the last meeting on this, but, but I'm not sure. Are, are council members thinking that, you know, if, if the board is looking for, are thinking about approaching the, the building in a, in a more unified way, I think it'd be good to clearly send that message to, to the library board.
Absolutely.
So, so they feel like they have the.
Is this a, a process? The question I had was, is this the last time we're going to see you folks? My understanding from the meetings I've been to is that you've discharged your responsibility with the presentation of this draft. So, when we're setting up this list of tasks, are we tasking the library board or the city staff or some combination thereof? Because we're not tasking you, right? You're not coming back. This document, we believe, fulfills the requirements of the RFP and it was done by the deadline in the RFP. Now, what we understand is that the library is going to be collecting comments from you and from public, and we're certainly prepared to take those comments and incorporate them as an, as an additional appendix in the report, so it's all documented. But I believe the work in the RFP that we've been asked to do has been done, yes. Okay. So, does that answer one of the questions you were posing about parking? I mean, the kind of thing that Iris. Now, let me say, if, if, if it's determined that we can be helpful in further discussions, you know, we've done some of those test fits to show you the kind of parking that we throw on there, we're certainly willing to participate in that. We can talk about the details of what that would look like later, but we certainly are willing to stay and help if you guys feel that's something we can help you do. Okay. Well, while you're thinking about that, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought. Well, I, Phil, I don't think necessarily I was saying that it would be the consultants who would do the outreach. So, you know, to put, you know, which is a fine question to ask, who would be responsible for that? But I was envisioning there would be more of staff and the library board working through those issues within the scope of the draft plan, such as it is. And, you know, what, what shape that takes in, I think, is going to be dependent on, you know, how those discussions go, whether it becomes an addendum to this or somehow gets attached to it. But, but from what I'm hearing from the library board is that they would like sort of a, a yes, please engage in those discussions in a more formal way. Am I, am I right on that?
You're right. That's correct.
Okay. Apparently, that wasn't crystallized at the last meeting. So, I, I want to try to crystallize at least on that point. And then, you know, we can talk about who does that, but I just want to make sure that the council wants to at least explore those options and wants to give a green light to have those discussions, so. Does that, are people there?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I would say in a general sense. I mean, in terms of.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to have to, yeah. But it's at least having those discussions.
Sure.
Without sort of, I don't think we have.
They're all needs we keep talking about, but at least need to be.
We keep talking about the needs. There's no question that this is a plan that can meet some of those needs, both on the library front, the parking front overall, a number of issues. So, then the question is, what really can be done or how long would it take to do it?
Right. So, so it sounds like there's clear, yes, let's have those discussions. So, as far as who has those discussions, I think it'd be very important to have. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
I, I mean, to me, it's very, it's very clear that it's a lot to ask the library board to enter into this type of business negotiation. It's really not what a library board is. Wyatt, this is something that I think the leadership has to come from the city with the library board always involved. But this, in the end of the day, is, for, for structured parking, it's a business decision.
I agree.
So, it should be handled.
I think that, I think that makes perfect sense. So, if Wyatt, you can, you know, and again, I want to make sure that it's cooperative, that we're not sort of, you know, because again, of the unique relationship of the chartered library board. So, I think it, it has to be a partnership, but I think given, it ma, makes sense to have Wyatt sort of working and pushing those discussions forward.
We agree. Our interest was in letting the condo board know of our deliberations and our consultants and what we were looking toward exploring. So, we agree entirely with your ideas to, to what the roles would be.
So, so are we then clear? It sounds like council's.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
Good there.
Good.
And then I think the one piece of this, this is outside of the, the RFP scope, is having the Economic Development Committee, or I'm sorry, the, the Economic Development Office begin to think about possible partnerships internal within the city apparatus. And I'm, I'm talking about all departments, organizations, et cetera, within the larger[1782.91] And I'm talking about all departments, organizations, et cetera, within the larger city, not just general gov. And other opportunities that may be on the horizon, you know, with things that may be happening, you know, soon, and also the private business community and other nonprofits or enterprises. I'm looking at those options.
If I could.
Go ahead.
The other process, somebody mentioned that this needs to plug into the CIP somehow. And so I guess the question is, by what point would we hear from the library board with your preference on the options that are outlined in the report? And would, that would be in time for us to incorporate your thoughts and our deliberation thereon into the next CIP? Is that, are we contemplating this is going to be part of the next cycle CIP, I guess?
We're hoping you contemplate that.
Okay. All right. The only other thing I wanted to say is, I, you know, I've had a chance to go to several of your meetings and commend Ms. Barry for her liaison work on our behalf. She knows the answers to all these questions already. I mean, it's a bold and thorough report. I feel like in the very gentlest of ways, you're telling us that as much as we love the current building, it is not the library of the future. I don't want to prejudge what the library board is going to say or do, but, you know, the chart that you pointed to where you, let's just say we did not do any parking. We don't, I do much for parking now, so let's contemplate a library of the future where, you know, we don't do any more than we're doing now, and we rely on folks to walk to it. So, you know, that would be a $17.6 million library, raise and build new, as opposed to the partial tear-down renovation, which would be 16-something. As you pointed out, the difference in cost there is so minimal that you're obviously, I think, telling all of us gently that we really should tear down and build new. And that leads me to ask just another question about a group of people we should talk to, which is the family, which dided us this land. Are they okay with us all considering an option that would raise the current building? Are they emotionally attached to the current building, or is it the land and the site that they are particularly keen on?
The deed of gift from the family stipulated two key facts, and one of them was, as you all know, that the property has to be treated as the city's library or else it reverts to the family. But the other key fact that's less well-known is that the architecture of the building needs to echo that of the Falls Church Episcopal and be Williamsburg style in nature. And so the family, at least in 1958, or whatever the date of that document is, they were interested in those two things. If I understand correctly, our last contact with the family was in about 1992 or '94. Dean Dirksen, the former library director, remembers that. And at that time, the family was still very interested in having the property revert to the family if the city stops using it as a library.
I will add that that de-document is one of the appendices in the document.
You know, obviously, I'm asking a question I know part of the answer to, but I do want everybody to be aware of the fact that apparently, you know, our conversations with the family are not current or ongoing, and so it might be useful as we put out a document here, which has a very realistic and, I think, not unreasonable alternative to raise the current structure that's going to make the headlines, that we just make sure that the family is aware of that and is on board with it. Otherwise, there's not much point talking about it.
I think that makes sense, too. Any objections to reaching out to the families?
If the deed.
You're speaking.
Again, maybe, the deed is that clear. Sure, let them know and so forth. If that's what the deed says, why would you go back and give the family a veto over the style of, it says Williamsburg style, so that's what we have to do. I don't know why you would seek their permission to do that. This is just courtesy.
Yeah, I think this is just to let them know that what the planning efforts are and keep them apprised, not, not, not can we.
Permission.
As long as it's sticking within the requirement.
Council member, we haven't, to answer your question, we haven't talked in terms of contacting the family to get their okay for these things. We have talked, though, to try to be as clear as possible that the use of the property clearly meets the needs at hand. It can't be sort of a fake sort of thing, or else we're afraid that the family will realize it and challenge us on it. So we're simply trying to be above challenge in whatever we do with the property.
I was actually agreeing with you first, the other way around.
Just one more question to follow up on some Joanna said. Where would we, one of the alternatives, or maybe more than one, says that we'll be off-site for a couple of years? Again, you know, what kind of conversations or feelers have we put out there to figure out where we're going to put the library for the next couple of years?
I'll speak to that. The idea of the raise and rebuild concept would clearly require the library to relocate for a certain period of time, so it could be 20, 24 months, you're exactly right. But we really didn't get into where that would be, because I think the first thing that has to determine is when that would be happening in terms of a schedule. So if we could begin to identify, as we've suggested on page 120, a calendar for when that might happen, then, in fact, we actually have a timeline for temporary space under timeline number one. So if the CIP allocations could be arranged to allow for the work to happen during the same period of time as the original CIP is, that is 2014, '15, '16, into '17, then we've given a timeline for when that could happen. So the short answer is, so if that gets agreed to, then that's when you begin to look at what your options are. The ideal solution would be to find as big of a space as possible and move the library into it. But there are certainly less-than-ideal other options that could be entertained for a short period of time.
That just goes to, you know, timetable questioning, too. I mean, again, getting us into the CIP project, some of us have been around here long enough, I don't remember, but when we moved the library to the CVS back in the late '80s, early '90s, that must have had a timeframe attached to it that we could go back and try to replicate. And the only other thing, I just wanted to second what Mr. Charter asked about the cost for debt service, Richard, on all these options, really. I think, you know, as important an institution as the library is to the community, people would benefit from knowing, hey, you know, the $17 million job would be three cents on my tax rate, the $27 million one would be whatever the number is. I don't know. I'm making my numbers up, but, you know, it's five cents. Yeah. And so if the community thinks that five cents is a pretty good deal for such an important institution, then I just think that's information that would be helpful to know before we go into it.
Makes sense. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I've got one more question. It's not really a question, it's a statement, since we may not be seeing a whole lot of you going forward. I would ask if you could to update the statement of probable cause to have the off-site parking, you know, in other words, I don't think any of this reflects the parking that you recommend. At least, that's my recollection, is that it, you know, one of them has 34 spaces, another one may have very little, if any, parking spaces. If you could do another line or something, there are two lines that say, you know, 115 spaces, off-site, off-site estimate does not include land costs, or something, because somebody's going to be looking at this document a year from now, they're not going to get that the number's not 17 million. It's 17 million plus whatever. But I think it would be better if you could say, even the one parking option where you've got parking, but it doesn't say for how many spaces, like an asterisk.
Sure.
Maybe I'm missing, it says parking at ground level. It's got the square footage of it, but if you could just say 34 spaces in that line, and then another separate someplace else, 115 recommended, you know, off-site estimate, blah, 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 so that we can look at this document a year from now and kind of remember and understand what it is that the actual costs are going to be. That'd be very helpful, at least to me.
Yeah, that's a good comment. I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Why don't we move to the next agenda item, the bus shelters? Do council members need a quick break? Yep. So why don't we come back at 9:30?
Not in the plan.
All right. Let's come back, and we're on to the bus shelter master plan.
For this, the bus master plan, the request of council is to adopt this plan at your meeting next week and to incorporate it by reference into the comprehensive plan. The planning commission is upstairs right now, and I believe they're going to recommend that the council do that as well. Paul's going to present the plan very briefly to you. The good news is, we do have funds to implement this plan, and so this would guide how we would spend those funds in a prioritized way.
And how did we get those funds?
We got these funds through the NVTA and through the transportation funding.
Yay, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And staff who've been working on this. Paul, tell us what it's about.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So there is a staff report before you, along with an attached draft master plan for bus stops and shelters throughout the city. The plan itself would do several things. First, it would design a bus shelter standard that would be used both for publicly funded shelters as well as privately funded shelters. This typically means developers are coming in and they're agreeing to put in shelters, and they need a standard to go by. Second, it provides, the plan describes a methodology and applies a methodology for prioritizing stops to be upgraded with shelters. And then third, it provides an implementation plan that staff would be able to follow as a schedule for implementing the plan. In terms of background, bus shelters are important, certainly in bad weather. We've certainly seen people standing, waiting in the rain for the bus. I've stood and waited in the rain for the bus. People stand in the snow, they stand in the wind. But even on good days, it's still important. When bus service is infrequent, or if the buses fall off schedule, someone could be standing there waiting for the bus 30 minutes or an hour. It's important to provide them a place to sit and wait, and a place where they feel comfortable and safe. The bus stop service, the bus service is regularly used in the city. Every day, there are 1,400 bus trips that start somewhere in the city. I think it's a lot higher number than people would first expect. In terms of existing policy and guidance, the city's comprehensive plan does call explicitly for providing bus shelters at high-use stops, near activity generators. And the count plan also calls for using streetscape features that are attractive and distinguish the city of Falls Church from the surrounding region. That's something the plan does. It prioritizes stops near the high-use stops, and it provides a style of shelter that is different from what other jurisdictions in the area use. Beyond looking at planning documents, staff also coordinated with the planning commission and the CACT in the drafting of this. Both of those bodies have now endorsed the plan, and both of those endorsements were In terms of, in addition to stop specification, shelter specification, it talks about potentially repositioning some of the stops and consolidating some of the stops. This is done to improve bus service and to make bus service safer. On the safety side, most bus riders are also pedestrians, either getting to the bus or getting off the bus, and that means they have to cross the street. So you want to put the bus stops in places that are safe for pedestrians to cross. Second, in terms of improving bus service, and this actually attracts more ridership, buses that stop too frequently are very difficult for people to ride, because it's a very slow service, and that makes it not competitive with other modes of travel. So you need to limit the stops to the extent possible to make it competitive with people's mode choices. On the flip side, you don't want to put the stop so far apart that no one can walk to the bus stop. And so there's a medium between those two desires. And what WAMADA research shows and other research from industry experts shows is that you want stops about four to five every mile, and that's what this plan seeks to do. This plan doesn't call for the outright removal of existing stops. Instead, it sets up a public process for how that would be done. The idea is that you would improve a stop, and then you would look at stops that are overly close to it according to those guidelines. You would identify those stops, you would post public notices, and then you would host a public meeting with the CACT where members of the public can come in and speak their piece about it. They could also provide written comments beforehand that would be presented to the CACT. The CACT would then make a recommendation up to the city manager, and it would be left to the city manager about whether or not to remove a particular stop. In terms of funding, as was briefly mentioned, funding these things is really a partnership with the city and other agencies and other levels of government. In fiscal year 2013, the CIP adopted a, I'm sorry, in fiscal year 2013, the city adopted a CIP item for $130,000 for bus stop improvements, and that was coming through federal and state funding. In fiscal year 2014, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority has granted the city $200,000 to provide bus stops and bus shelters. And in addition, several developments that are ongoing and active in the city have agreed to provide bus shelters or easements for bus shelters as part of their development projects. So then, moving into the fiscal impacts of the project, adopting the plan itself does not obligate the city to spend any funds. Construction of the projects, if implementation goes forward, the existing funds that are already lined up would certainly cover shelter installation for the first two years. It would likely go beyond that, but it would certainly cover the first two years. And that would be creating somewhere between eight and 10 shelters every year. So after that first two years, you've also covered a lot of the priority stops within the city. And after that, funding is exhausted, staff could look for additional external resources to fund these things. In terms of maintenance, the city currently funds bus shelter maintenance at a rate of $1,000 per year, and I would expect that rate to have to continue with these new shelters. And those costs could be reduced through a number of programs. Other jurisdictions do stop adoption programs where neighboring landowners and business owners would pick up the cleanup of the stop, and they report problems of the stop. They service the trash cans at the stop. So all of this reduces the need to send staff hours out there. Additionally, we could look to advertising opportunities. Other jurisdictions use advertising to offset the maintenance cost of the shelter. That's another thing that the city could look into, and that is something that the planning commission specifically asked for as part of their motion, that the shelter specifications include the possibility of later adding advertising boards to the shelters. In terms of timing, staff is looking for an immediate adoption of the program for two reasons. First is that staff is ready to implement and waiting for adoption. Second is that there are a number of ongoing development projects that have agreed to provide shelters, and they're waiting on city staff to provide shelter specification. And I'm happy to respond to questions.
Questions? Why don't we, why don't we go down the line? Phil?
I support immediate action on this. I just wanted to ask a question. If I have a strong bias, or rather, my daughter, I should say, has a strong bias in favor of shelters over benches. I think I've mentioned this before, sorry if I repeat myself, but, you know, for her sitting out on a bench on the side of the road somehow feels less like something that a reasonable person would do than sitting in a shelter structure. So the plan that we've mapped out here, is it, does it contemplate that we'll always have a mix of benches and shelters? Could we put shelters over the benches if we had more money? You see where I'm going?
Yes. There are two references to the preference for shelters instead of benches. The first is on the top of page three, where it's talking about what a bus stop with a shelter looks like. The second paragraph there starts out, "The following diagrams show the preferred design and layout of bus stops." I'm sorry. Go to the next section there, 2.3 on page five. "Bus shelter is in general the preferred alternative bench is appropriate when you don't have enough ridership at the stop, or you can't safely fit a shelter, or when you can't secure an easement that would allow a shelter." So the preference is always to go with a shelter unless there's some other reason not to.
And the plan that we're mapping out here, just back in the envelope, how many shelters and how many benches are we building? If we built it out, as you.
If we built it out, I would have to run the numbers in my head real quick here. I didn't calculate that out. I'd be looking at, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We're probably looking at about 20 shelters.
20 shelters and benches, bench onlys would be?
The bus, let's see, the bench onlys would be the other ones, so you'd be probably looking at 15 to 20 of them.
Okay. All right. Well, I would just say, you know, wherever possible, if we can make an effort to secure an easement, if it looks difficult, or, I think it's just, it looks better and it encourages ridership if we can have shelters to the maximum extent possible.
Right.
All right. Aaron?
No question.
Diane?
I echo Phil's remarks. That's where I was going.
Okay. I have nothing.
I would echo Phil's remarks as well, and I sort of look at this as having three components. It's first of all, a human service, because it's really ridiculous what you see out there today during inclement weather. Whole families just literally have no shelter at all. Second thing is, it offers the opportunity for public art and a unique image for the city that I think fits well with what we're trying to do in other areas, a consistent image kind of a thing, a public art, if you will. And third, of course, it is a factor in terms of encouraging transit use. The other one would be electronic scheduling, so that people know when the next bus is going to be there. But obviously, shelters are a key part of that, which in turn ties into small and large efforts to reduce traffic congestion on Seven and Washington and other areas. So this is a great, a great set of projects. I want to thank staff, all the staff, for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Ron?
Nothing else.
Yeah, a couple.
Yeah, a couple questions, comments. One, would these shelters or the signs have the electronic updates, you know, a bus coming in five minutes or they just old school, here's the sign, that's it?
So the, the standard that's provided here is to include a map with, with the bus schedule on it. However, there is, the specifications that are in here now would get finalized to include specifically the ability to retrofit electronic signage in there. I know that the 301 Broad Street has agreed to provide real-time sign information. And there is an ongoing project through Womata right now where they are providing real-time signage at existing bus shelters. And there is a rider on that contract that the city could come back and get that later added into these bus stops.
How much more would that cost?
I think they're looking at about $10,000 to $15,000 per shelter. So it actually doubles the cost of the shelter structure itself.
Gotcha. Okay. I guess I would also encourage you to have the developers, part of the voluntary concessions, maintain the shelter in front of, in front of their place. I don't know if we've done that in the past, I don't recall. But if we haven't, I think it's an amenity. It also sort of works in TDM, in terms of traffic demand management and mitigation. And I think that's a reasonable request. I mean, it's not a whole lot of money anyway, but I hope we're doing that.
We, we're not. We've been getting the proffer for the shelter, but not a maintenance agreement. So it's a point well taken.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that. And I tell you, in the future, particularly this extent developers are paying for these, I'd love to try an electronic sign or two in the city and see how it works, see if people like them. And just like as a pilot project in one place, see how it goes. I think it'd be kind of neat. The bike racks you mentioned, those are optional. I'd love to see the bike racks go in as just part of the standard package-
Yep.
-and not be an option. The design, has that been finalized, the ones we see in here? In other words, do we hire an architect to put these together or is that to be done in the future? The design of the, the little, whatever you call them, the-
Shelter.
Yes.
The, so the design-
I'm articulating with my hands. Okay, go ahead. I'm miming the shelter.
The shelter here, as shown, is the intended design. And what's included in the very back in the appendix, this is a shelter that was borrowed from another transit agency, Hampton Roads Transit. They actually bought 250 of these things, so I'm fairly confident that they're going to work. And so the idea here is to mimic that shelter with a few small modifications such as a larger sign board for the stop name and the inclusion of advertising space or the potential inclusion of advertising space. So in terms of the design, this is what was determined to be the best fit for the city in consultation with the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And so that's how the design came about. It was looking at other systems and then talking to city boards and commissions and getting a sense that this is generally what the citizenry wanted.
Okay. I have a little bit of concern about that little square of landscaping, that four-foot square right behind the trash can. I got the feeling that thing's going to be covered in trash, you know, after a couple months because people are going to miss that trash can and it's going to have cigarette butts and everything else down there. I'd almost like to, just even though I love landscaping, to have that gone out of there. I think it's going to be a maintenance nightmare to be, you know, picking out people's cigarette butts and whatever else ends up flicked in there. So that's just my two cents. Also, I think it'd be interesting if we could try to include the little city logo on these. I think that would be a kind of fun branding exercise.
It doesn't show up in the pictures, but that is included. You can see only the barest smidge of it. The diagram on page four, in that angle beneath the roof and above that headerboard, there is a location there where the city logo would be included on both sides of the shelter.
Would that be the city actual seal or the little city logo?
It could be the little city logo on one side and the city seal on the other.
I think that'd be kind of neat to, to get some branding exercise and kind of create some commerce. So I would encourage you to use the little city branding logo to the extent you can. Also, you mentioned easements. I would think that we would need an easement if this is within a sidewalk easement. I mean, John, I don't know if you have anything to add on that. We don't need to get separate easements for a bus stop, we already have a sidewalk easement, do we?
So the, I want to make sure I understand the question. The question is, do we need to get a separate easement if we have an existing streetscape easement?
Yeah, our sidewalk easement or whatever we might have.
And this would be an easement for what, the bus shelter?
Yeah, well, that was mentioned in the presentation, that we would need easements in certain circumstances. And I was thinking to myself, I can't imagine any circumstance where we'd need an easement if we already have a sidewalk.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the specific language of the public streetscape or sidewalk easement, but typically those are drafted broadly enough that you could put a bus shelter in there without having to get an additional easement. But again, I would need to look at the specific language.
Yeah, to the extent before you take off, if you could take a look at that so that whoever takes your place has a template where we don't have an issue later on where we've got sidewalk easements all over the place and we can't put, and we can't put bus shelters anywhere because, you know, we're in disputes with people. So anyway, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
So let's have this come forward next week then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
John, you may as well stay up there. The next item is an ordinance to men, chapter 48, designing ordinance to maintain principal usage status of water utility infrastructure public to the sale. In our zoning ordinance, we have listed as a byright use in our R1A zones. In item four, if you look on the last page of the S.A. reported line 56, currently a reach city-owned order and sewage pumping stations. And we would change that more generically to be water and sewage pumping stations owned by a government of public utility.
So that, this change would obviously allow this conforming use to continue as a conforming use should the referendum be approved by the voters on November 5th and the, and the, and the sale go forward on January 3rd.
Any questions? The one question I have, John, is what happens if it's not a conforming use? We do nothing?
What happens if what the water?
If we don't make the change?
Well, if we don't make the change, then Fairfax Water will not be able to use that site. And so, yeah, that's why we need to make the change.
Is there any reason why it needs to be as expansive?
Well, it could be narrower. It could be owned by a water authority specifically if we wanted to-
I guess what I'm getting at is if it gives, if it allows a city to maintain some control over lands within the city, we don't necessarily know what the water authority may do in the future. I just don't know if it necessarily has to be so blanket.
What we're trying to do is to make it work for Fairfax Water. And so we can keep it as narrowly tailored to that function-
Sure.
...as possible.
So we can certainly look at narrowing that language.
Got it. And I take it this wouldn't, we don't have concerns about spot zoning with something like this?
No, because we're not-
District-wide.
Yeah, it's district-wide and we're not changing the use that's authorized. We're simply changing the entity, well, we're modifying the entity that can make, make, make the use. We're not changing the use itself, so it's not spot zoning.
So my only suggestion would be let's narrow, narrowly tailor it. I don't know if other council members have any comments?
And the only site in the city that really this pertains to is up there behind the Eden Center and near Oakwood Cemetery. I mean, that's, that, that tower. In terms of existing uses. Okay.
Another reason why I highlight it, because that is a very viable commercial.
Yeah, it's not really jutting into the Eden Center, it's more jutting into the cemetery. Just as, for reference, but.
But it is, it is a prime commercial location.
It is?
I mean, it's, that area is very developed.
That's sort of when I read, that's how I saw it and I'm like, why are we going this expansive?
You don't want to disturb the undead. And then I'll, for the next one, the ordinance to adjust the boundary line, I'll let John handle that.
Thank you. This is another procedural step required related to the water transaction. As part of the, the boundary adjustment process, we, we are required by the state statute to adopt an ordinance that basically approves the, the boundary adjustment. And that is a necessary step before the three-judge court can finalize the, the adjustment. The timing on this is, is such that we will, we're proposing a first reading next Monday and then a second reading November 11th, a week after the referendum. And so if the referendum does pass, that would be perfect for the schedule. If it does not, then we would simply remove it from the, from the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Other council members?
I would just suggest that we perhaps use this as a, to the extent that we're allowed to lawfully, as another educational opportunity in educating the public about the referendum through the mechanisms that we can legally and being neutral without advocating that.
As a council.
As a council. Just it's another step in the process that I think we should utilize as an educational opportunity without advocating.
Of course.
All right. Then the next item is the first quarter financial report. Mr. LaConde has that as a handout for the council.
Yeah.
Pop quizzes.
We have to show our work on a separate page.
Don't understand, I'll pass them. No, Nick's just got them.
Oh.
Hi, I'm-
You have it. Okay. All right, you serve.
And if this is not already on Granicus, if we can make it available on Granicus. I think we're going to show these with the school board, so let's get them a copy as well. Yep, we do that.
That is the plan. Happy Monday, council. This report comes with a couple of caveats. Number one, do not be fooled by the total revenue line at the far right where it has a percentage of 9.61. Our focus should be on those key revenue indicators, personal property, sales, meals, and B-Pole. Okay? And if you focus on those, what you'll see is modest growth. The second caveat is, in providing the forecast for 2015, we will be looking at what we did actual '13, what '14 looks like so far and what we think '15 will look like. As I have indicated at year-end and on other occasions, the revenue growth, while it is still growing, it is not growing as rapidly as it has been in the past. All right, if you read the narrative, that will explain some of the key indicators. If you look at the expenditures, there's nothing dramatic there. We did have an overrun in Womata. We did not budget any money for Womata in the FY14 budget. And of course, our trust fund was 40,000 short. So we are going to monitor that closely as we will all of our expenditures. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hannah?
As always, when we look at variances in expenditure, we need to ask the question, is this a, is this a real, you know, is this, is this a, an expenditure timing issue or is this a real reduction in expenditure? So when you start looking at some of the large ones, we do know that in executive management, there's a, there's a significant underspend in the area of the sheriff, there's an underspend, public safety and underspend. I presume these are timing issues or?
Most of these are timing issues. Just keep in mind, the first quarter is generally comprised of paying off FY13 bills first. So as the 14, as we go further into 14-
We'll catch up.
...you'll see that the spending will pick up. This is no different. If you look at this and look at what we did the first quarter of last year, the variance is 1%.
Ah, okay.
All right. Other council members?
Yeah, I've got a, so just so I understand correctly, the personal property taxes are up 5.88% from last year, correct?
Yes, in gross, but then includes interest and penalties. If you look at the, just the billing, it's only up about 2.5%.
So we have 100 and, I don't know how much thousand, but-
Yes, we had about 150-something thousand in interest and penalties.
Ira didn't pay your car bill on time this year?
Found me out.
So-
Nah, that's Tom Clinton walking around, yeah.
So, but I mean, does that happen every year or is this just an incredible anomaly this year?
I, I couldn't tell you because, you know, what we've been looking at in the past is double-digit increases when you look quarter over quarter or year over year. It just so happens that this is your first major indicator of your new fiscal year. All right? So we budgeted 4.3 million. It came in at 4.4. When you add it on interest and penalties, it ballooned to the 4.4 number that you have there.
And then the sales tax is 3.21.
Yes.
And then the, the B-Pole, that was the third item you mentioned. I mean, this seems probably like some anomaly of payment because it's down 74%.
Well, keep in mind, B-Pole is, is a billing that occurs in March. So all you have here is interest and penalties. That's the same that is true for your real property taxes. If you noticed, we only budgeted 30,000 for this quarter because that's not when you bill your real estate taxes. That's a December bill. So if you exceed that number, generally it's interest and penalties.
But these numbers, I don't know if we have what you budgeted here before us, but these numbers are better than what you budgeted, pretty much all of them, aren't they? A bit?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Ira?
I think what's going to be interesting will be the second quarter, when you factor in the shutdown and the furloughs, that's, that's going to be a very telling number as well. And then the third quarter to see if there's any improvement in confidence. We get, we have some unknowns going forward.
Again, the, the growth in the, in the key indicators is there. It's just not as healthy as it was in the previous year. So our growth won't be in the 5% range. I doubt that very much.
And does this include the Anadale Shopping Center coming online? I mean, that thing seems like that's going pretty well. You know, the, it used to be called the Anadale Shopping Center, I don't know what it is now with the Caribbean Cafe and whatever else is the Dunkin' Donuts. And it's kind of almost like a new shopping center coming online because it was shut down for a year or two. I guess those numbers, our numbers here include all that, right?
I would imagine that it does. But again, that may be the difference between the drop-off of 6.7% at the end of last year to the 3.2 increase. It may have something to do with it.
I could absolutely see it having something. Thank you.
Anything else?
Could you take me through the beginning total fund balance and ending total fund balance there on that page and express, is that the unassigned fund balance? Is that what we're calling that? Can you express that?
No, this is, this is just your total fund balance. We pick up the fund balance number at the beginning, that's your, your unaudited. And for this quarter, we overs, we outspent our revenue by 1.7 million, so your fund balance is down. At this point, your, your fund balance numbers are really not that significant.
Mm-hmm. You don't-
If we get to the third quarter and we're still-
So in terms of the percentage that you're hoping for in fund balance?
You mean the 17%?
The 17% number?
Yeah.
Well, generally, that's a, that's an annual number.
Right.
As of 6/30/13, your number was 20.5.
Five, I think.
Seven, whatever the number was.
Are we saying?
Keep in mind that our policy indicates that what we're supposed to do once we reach 17 is to put it in capital reserve. We are researching the method that we go about doing that, whether it requires a council action or not.
Mm-hmm. So in other words, what to do with the money between the 17 and 20.5, I think is what the number was. And how much money is that actually?
If my memory serves me correctly, it's about 2.4 million.
Okay. Ira?
Richard, doesn't the 20%, that includes, since, since of 6/30, it includes the, the tax billing with the higher rate?
Yes.
So that's part of why the fund balance is 20% because of the- So, that's part of why the fund balance is 20%, because of the way it's accounted. And it will simply drift down, because a lot of money is obligated in the FY14 budget.
But it would be, if it's accounted the same way every year, it's apples to apples, right?
Depends on how much of a tax increase you do. Okay, what the assess of growth is.
Right.
The growth and assessment.
I mean, obviously, those things always, they're variables, I understand that, but if if the variables remained at or near levels that they're at now, there's not any dramatic different thing we're gonna do unless we go to budgeting across a different calendar.
Yes.
Okay, and the cost associated with doing that is something that we'll talk about later.
Yes.
Okay.
This is matching up the.
Just on this point about the fund balance, as I'm understanding it, one of the reasons why there's what appears to be a, what looks like an uptick is because the billing just came in, so the money is there. Eventually, it's gonna get drawn down. So, if the calendar doesn't change, and theoretically, if we lower the tax rate, there's gonna be less, it'll look like there's less money from this snapshot in time to next snapshot in time. And if we increase the tax rate, it's gonna look like the percentage is higher snapshot in time to snapshot in time.
Yes.
It's the same way as your bank account works.
Yes.
So, you get your paycheck, you're taking the snapshot. We just took the snapshot after the money just came in, so it's gonna be higher.
Yes.
And then we're gonna draw it down, which is what we're starting to do.
I guess my, what I'm trying to understand is if the snapshot always shows that it's above 20%, then, as you said, we have other plans in mind for how we're gonna deal with what is a persistent overage from top of target.
Okay. Let's go back. You did a tax rate increase, all right? You got the benefit of it in '13, but it funded your '14 budget. If all holds true, you won't be anything more than a 20.7. All right, if you move the fund balance the way you're supposed to, to capital reserve, you'll be at 17. And the only reason you'll go above 17 is if assessed values go up. You do a tax rate increase, or there's an uptick in revenue.
So, basically, setting up a kind of sweep into this capital reserve, which we'd be able to explain to people as a specific amount of money that's dedicated to very specific causes, or very specific.
Pay-as-you-go capital.
Right, I mean. Yeah, but explaining, no, sadly, it is not. You know, explaining that in terms of what it buys, I think, is maybe the next step, because Mr. Kalen is correct. It has been explained, but can assure you that it's not understood. And, you know, I think that's partly the folks' fault, but it's partly just because we're not making that tangible. But anyway, we'll talk about that later. I'm just trying to understand the kind of amounts of money that we are talking about. There is money, and we need to figure out what to do with it, and we need to explain that in a way that people can understand.
It's not, it's not like it hasn't already been explained. You know, we, again, you have a policy.
Yeah, I just can't, I mean, we keep going through this. It's like, we've got the, I mean, we've, it came up in the budget. We put the policies into place. We figured out so far how we're gonna utilize the money and where the overages are gonna go.
Right.
And yet, we still come back to, it's getting lost in messaging, or we keep rehashing it here.
Well, what you've said, though, you just, did I get it wrong? You've just said that you're gonna come to us with some way to make it more clear that we are going to put this money into capital, or did I not hear that right?
The question is, we have a policy that says that once you've reached a 17%, that the money goes into capital reserve. What is not clear, and what I have to research, is whether you formally have to take action
To make that happen.
To assign that money.
Okay.
Or whether it's automatically done.
The policy is there.
Just another opportunity for people to understand, you know, that we have a process for allocating this money. That's all that I'm asking, and that's fine.
Yes, we do have a process.
Okay, thank you.
And a policy.
All right. Okay. Anything else on?
No, but.
No, but.
No, I'm not gonna open it up again, but it would be helpful to illustrate what projects are funded with the capital reserve money. So, people know that the money is being deployed for important public functions.
That's why you've been here so long and express it so succinctly. That's exactly what I'm, what are we buying with this money? That is what we need to communicate to people.
If you go back and you read the policy very briefly, it outlined why we were establishing the reserve. The reserve is designed to help you replace your assets as they fully depreciate. The number that we came up with was designed to get us up to a certain level in terms of the capital reserve that reflected that we were setting aside money for future capital needs. You have to replace three of your school buildings. You have to replace another 10 police cars. You have to replace a fire truck, a ladder truck, and you have no reserves to address it. This was designed to be the beginning of establishing those reserves.
Just, is there any way we could call it an assigned to fund balance? I think that the problem with the lingo, you and I have talked about it. The problem with the lingo is unassigned sounds like what it sounds like. It's unassigned. It's just money floating out there, whereas you've talked about, you know, an assigned fund for police cars, for fire trucks, for schools.
That's the reserves. That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think that is not a phrase that we often use, and if it's not the right one to use, then we shouldn't, but if it is, then we should.
Well, Ira would only let us use the word earmarks. I've offered that. Just call it the fund for police car, or school, I mean, we get your point.
Funds that are earmarked, I mean, I don't think, you know, it's congressionally designated spending. I mean, it's council-designated spending.
Again, when you first start out investing, or when you become a young adult, okay, and you get your first job, and your parents have told you, set aside money.
Pay yourself.
All right, pay yourself first. Now, you generally will establish some percentage. You don't say, this $10 is for my next car, or my first car. This $20 is for my next apartment. Once you've established that you've put aside that money regularly, and you've built up a sum of money, then you can say, okay, 10,000 is allocated toward my first car. 20,000 is allocated to the down payment for my first home.
You know, everybody can, everybody can, you know.
You don't start out with your first dime saying, this is my, this is my down payment for my first house. You say.
True, sure.
Well, some of us may do that.
Oh, I was gonna say, you might do that. Okay, well, I think that level of dialogue, I hate to say it, but you know, on November 14th after the election, you're gonna be sitting in a big room full of people, many of whom, some of whom are gonna be very new to all this stuff. And, you know, I just think that explaining it as council-directed spending above unassigned funds are plus makes more sense than the way we have been explaining it up to date.
I think this goes to a key communication issue. We're way off topic, but one thing that keeps coming back to is there needs to be, especially with a new council coming in, there needs to be a budget locality 101 that goes through the policies. I know that we do that.
My office is always open.
But it sounds like it needs to be much more formal, I think, what I'm gathering.
Yes.
Besides the retreat.
Mandatory appearance. That'll be fine.
Three-day retreat at this point, one day of it spent on Richard and.
No sleep, no food, three days.
Unbudgeting, and there will be a pop quiz. And the press will be invited, and they'll take a pop quiz, too.
I have, I have audited books. I didn't give them to council yet?
You did.
Yeah, you did. I've got my general fund book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. That's your prime.
Why don't we go to Vice Mayor Snyder? I think he has a comment, and then we'll go back to Ira and end it.
Just in addition to that, a public version of that, so that people understand better what we're doing, be very helpful.
Ira?
Actually, two comments. Wasn't the FY14 budget, didn't it have a larger amount for the capital fund that we weren't able to, that was removed, the cut was cut? Part of the funding for capital projects, I think it was pay-as-you-go, that cut in order to get the numbers to square?
What we did, well, no, it's not, it's not a trick question. We set aside money in Pago, and we were trying to build up Pago.
Right.
But what we've been doing is, as quickly as we set it aside, we use it in that same year. Okay, so, in essence, you have not given yourself an opportunity to build up Pago.
So, I mean, just understand what pressures are gonna be in the FY15 budget. That's the only reason.
Right, and remember that in '14, you didn't have a set aside. What you did is you said, we're gonna have surplus money in '13, and we're gonna apply it to '14.
Yeah, so.
So, in the '15 budget, you don't have $568,000.
So, let's try to prospectively look at this.
Just a second point.
I'm gonna try.
I said there'd be two points because of this.
All right, go, Ira.
And this is related to the issue of, you know, the way, why accounting, or explaining it is so difficult. You'll notice that, leading up to the debt ceiling crisis, the Treasury Department said that actually, technically, the Treasury had run out of money in May. But through, and they even used the word, due to accounting gimmicks, they were able to extend it to October 17th. The reason they say that, because it's even simple analyses are difficult to get across, so they didn't even bother. And actually, interestingly enough, no one even asked what those gimmicks were. Because you get into, you go, it's like walking into La Brea Tar Pit. You go in, and you never come out.
All right. And just to keep this perspective looking, and a little bit higher level, we are gonna be talking about the budget guidance coming up shortly to the manager about developing the budget, just so cards are on the table. I think what this reiterates again is the need to continue to focus on capital. So, I put that out there. I'm gonna be making that pitch, so nobody's surprised, and they shouldn't be, because it's been something that I've talked a lot about, is the need, and whatever budget guidance we get, needs to focus critically on capital. Because that's where we're gonna be facing huge pressures.
And particularly, as you said tonight about the library, you know, translating the price tag that we're being handed for each of these big tickets into pennies on the tax rate, based on a 30-year or whatever the bond issue is, you know. I think that helps. People don't have to know the gimmicks, but they have to know the price tag. And if they understand that, you know, the library's gonna cost me X, and the city hall's gonna cost me Y, and the school's gonna cost me Z, then you can begin to have an intelligent discussion about, is that too much, too big, too little? We'll do it all. We can't do it all, whatever.
Right.
Okay, so, let's turn to the city council comments and schedule. There was one thing I wanted, just to give Wyatt an opportunity to pop, I don't think we're gonna have time for a report out, but this is going back to the Washington Street area plan. There was, there was discussion about making sure that Vipis's comments were considered, given that we got those the night that we heard the item. And then two, the EDC also had some, or I'm sorry, the EDA had some comments. So, if we can make sure that the Vipis comments, the EDA comments, were addressed in the draft plan.
There was a meeting today with planning staff, with Ruth Rogers and Mike Volpe with Vipis, and I believe they made a lot of progress in just working through the plan and incorporating Vipis's comments. And so, we'll provide a more detailed report on that to the council, but I think it was a very effective meeting. And I don't have anything to report on the EPA comment, the EDA comments.
Yeah, if you can just check in on the EDA comments and any other public comments that we received from boards and commissions.
Okay.
One other thing relating to that is to lay out the city's investments already that are in the planning stage, your implementation stage in the area, as well as.
And that includes grants.
That includes grants, yep. So that the census, we're not just waiting around. We're in fact putting some things in place to implement.
That's right, with schedules.
Phil, and then.
Just two items I hope will be of general interest. One, speaking as an individual, not an advocate, but the private effort to advocate for yes vote on the referendum is underway, officially established as of this afternoon. It's a legal entity with the state board of elections, and is receiving contributions, and will be conducting a yard sign and traditional paper literature, and perhaps newspaper advertising campaign over the next 10 days. Carol Lofter Thune, as was identified in the news press last week, is leading the effort. And second, CBC Democrats, Republicans, and I guess the American Legion, too, they've thrown in, are having the last and final Water Forum tomorrow night at Cradle Cauldron at 7:30. So, everybody be there, and, you know, ask your last round of questions.
And just on scheduling, I believe that the calendar should reflect the UNPET plan.
It's the multimodal transportation planning framework discussion is scheduled for the November 18th.
Wow. Wow.
Johanna, that's what I get for listening to you.
I love it. Thank you. I was wondering where it was.
Can we be clear, this is not the old BYPET plan?
Of course it's not.
Including all the objectionable things. This is not that, right?
No, it's not.
It's not, just to be clear, it's not pled plan version two. It's a complete rewrite.
It's a restart and a reframework. And just broadly speaking for the full council, the approach that we've discussed in smaller groups with the council, and want to go out to vet with some key stakeholders, and people have been very involved in the process, is a process in which we do set aside the work that has been done. We take the the work that we did to assess current conditions, and also to take the ADA components of the prior planning effort, and use those as a staff resource into the future. But in terms of a complete restart, we would work on the comprehensive plan, which we're planning to update chapter by chapter. The transportation plan would come to the council early in that process, and in it, we would set the high-level vision and goals for transportation planning throughout the city for all modes. In that chapter, we'd have proactive policy direction and lists of projects and prioritize projects for the commercial districts. For the residential districts, we propose a process that is citizen-driven, through a competitive process, through a process similar to Arlington County's Neighborhood Conservation Program. And that's the broad framework that we're working on with Councilmember Barry, and wanna go out to the community to have some smaller conversations about that approach, vet it, and then bring that to the council on November 18th for a fuller discussion. So, that's basically where we are in it.
All right. Anything on schedules, Ira?
On schedule? No, but I have the number.
Go ahead.
Dave Tarter asked me to present a detailed analysis of where we are on pensions, but I'll put that. But I'll refrain, I'll refrain from doing it right now, but we'll leave that for another, but you've been, you asked me specifically to do it.
Be careful.
Wow, all right. John, do we need a motion to go past 10:30?
No.
Not for a work session, okay. So, the only, and I don't think we're gonna, are we gonna be doing a motion, John, when we come back? So, all we're gonna be doing when we come back is moving to adjourn, so we're gonna go into closed session.
I've talked to you about this before, Wyatt, but I'd like to, for our applications for land use approvals to get a disclosure statement. Other jurisdictions do that for transparency's sake, so that the people who are making the application, we have no idea who owns what, or what conflicts there might be. It's just common in pretty much every other jurisdiction that I'm aware of in the immediate area, that as part of the application, for example, for an SE, the applicant would disclose who owns the property and who has interest in the property, so that staff and council can make sure that there's no conflict of interest and the like. I would just ask again if maybe we could try to put that together, and even for this one that's current right now, is to get the information to anyone who might want it, to ensure that there's no issues with that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Upon a motion made by councilmember...
Barry.
And seconded by councilmember...
Kalen.
And passed by a, a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A. Discussion consideration, interview prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplinary, or resignation of specific public officers, appointments for employees of any public body regarding the interim city attorney. Mayor Baru, yes. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes.